All right, let's call the meeting to order. Would you folks like to join me? Right for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone.
We would like to start the meeting with a moment of silence for both the folks who lost their lives in Buffalo, as well as the nineteen schoolchildren and two teachers who just lost their lives in Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. And to piggyback on that, I just want to say that, you know, when my daughter, who's now in eighth grade, went into kindergarten, she came home and said, mommy, we had to hide in the closet today because in case turkeys get in the building. And it was a gut punch, right, to all of us, and I didn't have to do that with my older children. And we all know that gun violence is out of control in America, and our schoolchildren are in danger. And they're, it's the number one leading cause of death in children nineteen and younger, above cancer, above car accidents, above anything else. Right now, it's gun deaths for our kids. Right? And we have a Congress who doesn't want to take action, and I don't want to get political because they have to work that out. But it's the elephant in the room that we can't ignore. And from a mental health perspective, we do these safety drills. And guess what it does? Causes unbelievable anxiety in our children. Our children have anxiety at a level unseen in prior generations. I took my daughter to the ballet Sunday. The very first question she asked me when we got in the car was, mommy, do they have security? And again, gut punch. You're like, that's what you're thinking about at fourteen, and I'm taking you to this gorgeous song-like production? They just have a different mindset. They've been brought up with it. They're hiding. Helpful or not, studies are coming out showing it might not be helpful. But I just, there's a group in town getting together. I think we're going to have to acknowledge and talk about a lot of this for school safety. And in years past, we had brought in the police chief, the school resource officers, to come to school committee meetings. And so for future meetings, I'd like to see us start the year, kickstart the year in September with having those folks come to the table and talk to us about our safety protocols because we certainly have them in place here. Some can be disclosed, some cannot for obvious reasons, but it's just a sad, I feel like we're almost at the brink of no return. And it's, we need to just be proactive and care about our children. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. Just a couple of housekeeping items. First, Mrs. O'Connell is not going to be joining us tonight. She has a conflict in her schedule. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And so if you'd like to make a public comment, first of all, you are welcome. We're glad that you're here. A couple of things is, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can come up to any one of these chairs at the table. All we ask is that you introduce yourself with your name and what street you live on in Duxbury. And I don't drive a hard bargain. I just ask that you try to keep your comments to around three minutes. We won't be exact about it, but we'd love to hear any comments that you'd like to make at this time. Please come up. Hi. No pressure. This is all being recorded.
My current, I'm Captain O'Malley, of the street called the Tab. Two of the findings, the first one is, whatever I say here is not an indication of what my son may mean. No child wants to come in and discuss issues, so. So I'm using a different. And of course, if you disagree with me, you won't get to him later, but that's okay. And the second is, what I'm saying is not a reflection of a day teacher in the school. I'll have to give you this, different ideas, and some other personal chat. Respect people whether. But my, I have a couple of concerns. My first concern is that June twenty fifth is going to be the drag queen story hour. That's for the library. I know the schools are not strictly related to the library. It's a public event. People can go if they want to go. They do have control though because someone within the school is daily required that is in the library. This flyer is accessible to all the kids we may. And I don't think the kids should be seen as far as, I don't think it's right. I know we're trying to promote. All support on gender, however, I think that this person in particular was speaking and presenting at this drag queen event. I brought a copy of some texts that he has. His name is Patrick Bird. Those are the minimum category, he's speaking at a meeting at the library. He was saying proof that I follow. It's all Massachusetts, more packets and. Stuff. Writing down sexually indiscreet stuff, this is Patrick that's said. I can pass it around and people to look at. It's not necessary to help people here. But it's shared to me because I think I'm concerned about the safety of our children. I don't think we should be in a position of allowing me just to turn our students. Here's this flyer. We are a safe school. We shouldn't have somebody with this graphic sexual stuff. And we'll pass this around. This is simply a kind of a line behind the side. Some comments. But anyway. Schools could feel safe. We've got the mission of all, please. Yeah, because I'm a G teacher. With that side, we guarantee why I say. I'd like to know, would you have this person at the library coming as a substitute? And if he's going to come in as a substitute, is that safe? Also, in the fall, not fall, months ago, it was the presentation about which is safe. It was heated, and I did not speak because I knew it was going to be presented and not the speaker. Because I felt teacher attacks that were responsible and just because I'm usually different. Whether, you know, life is different, my family, and everyone should be respected and all be. I think the teachers in charge of every club, most people want attention and their attention is really not, it might be misguided. Criticize. But anyway. So I like to follow the issues of sexuality. Much of my job is to speak. But because I think the schools doing so much focus on emotional learning, and there's so much more online with these kids than focusing on sexuality. But we seem to put it in a little talks. There are kids, there are so many kids who've lost parents. Do you know how kids, parents die? Even nine parents lose in in September eight? How do we deal with kids with lost parents? Kids are dealing with divorce, probably dealing with a lot of other issues, whether it's homelessness. I think all kids, regardless of race, gender, gender, sexual preferences. I think all of them are probably, they have the right to make their own choices. But I think the school is not open to any development that could affect our yard. When I say this, the other day, I went to the senior center. We're, this is me and Robert Carlin speaking. And he's in charge of being, this was co-founder of the GSA in the public schools. Interesting, engaging, funny. But nature gives you breed on, and it's maybe number one thing we read on. These are things that all young people are entitled to the educational opportunity in a safe environment. All members of the community. I would say. But there are things we do not agree. They comments about how traditional, how we're concerned with parents who are biologically, if only male or female sex. I believe that in two thousand years, those will be. If people wish to be differently thought, but the school, again, this, my school. Is, he is in charge of the GSA in terms of rewarding it across the state. Concerned that that would be presented. And I think it goes against concern. I think he said there's a lot of bullying to it. Alleging to two students. I agree. I think probably it's, you know.
Yeah, we're getting kind of in there, but I mean, we definitely appreciate the points that you're making. Is there anything, any other point that sort of is different from what you've been making or?
I just want to say I have concerns about the library. Just the political ideology, all these things on side.
Well, thank you very much for your comments.
Sure. The, what you gave us? Was this like found out because somebody, found because somebody went through his? This isn't what he presents at the library.
I don't know what he presents at the library.
Okay.
But if you know.
I mean, it would absolutely not be.
I absolutely feel if he presented that at the library, he would probably be arrested. Hopefully, but maybe not.
Exactly. Okay.
And so my point is, so if we want to encourage people to have to do it themselves, it should be ways to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Malley, for your comments.
If I walk out of the line, it's a class at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Hi, come on up.
Just because the audio at home. For people watching, for the speakers. Yep, it was already off.
I'm sort of between audio visual systems right now, but.
If you can just speak up. It was hard for the, hard for anyone watching on Zoom for the, for the recording to pick up.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Julie Nadi, I'm chief chief. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a mom of two boys at Austin. I'm a math educator in public schools. And I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for that. Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. We work in our own communities, with schools and churches and other organizations, which is why I'm sitting here before you today to encourage a culture of responsible gun ownership. We know that gun violence is preventable, and we're committed to doing what it takes to keep families safe. As a volunteer, I have primarily worked within the Be Smart program. Be Smart is a campaign aimed at reducing unintentional shootings, suicides, and some school shootings that happen when unsupervised, unauthorized children and teens gain access to unsecured firearms. Since 2018, I have partnered with school districts around the South Shore, including my own district of Plymouth, to spread this lifesaving message. I would love to have the opportunity in the future to speak in depth with members of the school committee and with school administration officials and members to share about this campaign. I'll probably be sending you an email coming up shortly, and thank you.
Thank you.
So I wasn't planning to do this, but I just wanted real quick. I'm Martha Dennison. I live in the street. And as many of you know, I'm one of the library trustees, so I just wanted to real quickly address the drag queen story hour at the library. The drag queen story hour captures the imagination at play of gender fluidity and childhood, emphasizes acceptance through joy and learning. In programs like this, kids are able to see why, I'm sorry, see people who defy rigid gender restrictions and imagine a world where people can present how they wish and where dress up is real. All that matters when you play dress up is that you feel comfortable, creative, and you get to be who you are. When the drag queens come to story hour, it's just like a regular story time. They read books and they sing songs. The books they're going to read are Just JP and Patty Ray. Very straightforward and very simple. It's easy for the kids. We're not, no one's trying to indoctrinate anybody. Just trying to make it fun for the kids. Regular show. Questions, Senator?
That's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Screen with.
Sorry.
So I was, I was going to hit three points. So the first one is.
Just for the record, would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Chomping at the bit.
All right, sorry. Yeah. So the first thing, when we were going through the election process, a lot was discussed about transparency. And I guess the one thing, we come here and talk, I still feel like as a school committee and a school community, like, how do we address if we want to sit down and have discussions? So since, you know, we sit here and we do our bit and then have those. I still feel like somehow or other, and I don't know if that's been a discussion, just figuring out how, you know, students can sit down and have debates and. That's where we have a debate.
One.
I just thought of that the other day.
So one way to do it is keep it one way for now, and I expect that you stay at the meeting for a little bit. I think you might be well informed on some things that we have on the.
Okay, all right. And that's true. I guess that's the.
Yep.
The other, the other thing is kind of addressed the point that I think, and I brought it up to you in the email about security and stuff. So DA two Poores is our DA in the county. He's up for reelection, and he's very, very vocal, the guy that's running dessens of George Soros back candidate. So much of everybody's aware of what happens when there's a George Soros back candidate. So he is very vocal. So I'm saying this because he is very vocal about this. Because the things back for George Soros basically is not constant. That's what's kind of happens in LA. There's a, you know, he's, he's part of the National District Attorney's Association. He's reached out to other district attorneys that dealt with the same. And but how do they deal with it when they're running against someone? He's been there twenty years, about thirty percent deduction crime in this county. We're in the top nine percent percentile of saving communities in this country. So he's, you know, he's done a really good job. So I just want to bring that up to feel like it should be something that we should be thinking about as far as, as far as the community goes and make sure that's basic. We're lucky that we're in that nine to nine percent. And the other piece is because you know how I feel about the vaccine mandate and all that with the eight percentile with the schools. I do feel like I can talk about it just because dessens is the one that really kind of put it into the equation in schools. So Pfizer, they, all their studies that tried to keep them under wraps for seven, five years, all the studies that it proceeded to before it was released. Aaron Seragroth for it. They had to release everything, but then releasing all the data at the beginning of every month, starting in February. Naomi Wolf's been doing an amazing job at two hundred fifty hours of best people going through the data. There's a lot of, I'm not even going to commit a digital, I think everyone should be aware that it's out there. There's a lot of really scary data. I think this should be part of the discussion. That's the discussion begins.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Green. Appreciate it. Does anyone else have any other comments they'd like to make? Rumor has it we have space for two public comments at our meeting, so. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Excellent. So the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. We'll start by asking for a motion to approve the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Any comment? Any discussion on that? Any questions? All those in favor? I, all those opposed? Yeah, I see. It's four nothing. We have two some. Okay, the motion passes. Let's get back there. Can I entertain a motion to approve the May, the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
Second.
Great.
Any discussion on those minutes? I have a couple of things. Suzanne, on, let's see. The second page of those minutes, underlying item D, Director of Special Education. Mrs. O'Connell asks that we put into the record that she did request that the SPED survey be sent to parents and guardians of children on a five oh four. As an editorial comment, she knows that that's not going to happen. She just wanted to. She asked for it.
Okay.
Okay. And then I have one other item. If you go to the next page, Suzanne, under the overnight field trip for DHS. I had just suggested that Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Hart would consider arranging to have some students at that, who do that field trip, come to the school committee meeting and just present to us their experience. So if we could just get that in where I was in the minutes, that would be great. And if you could just put Martha's rape tone in.
It's time to dance, that one.
All right. You all set?
I can think of it. You can just make it a period.
Okay. So so I'm just going to amend the motion. I have a motion to approve the May eighteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two minutes with the two changes that I decided. All those in favor? I oppose. All right, next item on the agenda is reports for the school committee, so we'll start with Dr. Fleming.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start by saying it's always important for us to just share that we support our GSA. We have many LGBTQ identifying students and teachers in our schools, and I think it's important for them to feel accepted and to have access to programs across town and in our schools that make them feel supported and accepted. I just wanted to start tonight by sharing some updates. I know we've had several parents that have rightly been concerned about school safety. I think any time there's a terrible event, it just brings to the forefront concerns that every parent has. Doesn't matter if your kids are three years old or eighteen. We want to make sure they're safe at school, and we also want to make sure our staff members are safe at school. So we just want everyone to know that we're really open to the questions that we've received and to some of the great suggestions that have come up from the parents that have reached out. I just want to share that I have in the past that we have a really strong safety plan here in Duxbury. I feel very comfortable with our emergency procedures, but I think there's always ways that we can enhance them. And I think that in the past years, we've been cautious about causing students extra anxiety the way Kelly shared. But I think we're at a point now where we want to make sure our students are feeling prepared in all different areas of the building. And so we don't want to just do one safety drill a year or two safety drills a year in a really predictable way. We want to start looking at making sure that our students are prepared in any classroom setting that they may be in if there's any type of emergency inside the school or sometimes there are emergencies outside the school where police may be dealing with an event in a nearby neighborhood or on a school street. And we want to make sure that if we have gym classes outside and that no matter where our kids are, they feel comfortable to be able to follow their teacher's directives. I had a nice meeting with Chief McDonald and Lieutenant Chubb today. I can't say enough how supportive our police department is of any needs that we have in our school district. All I have to do is send a message to the Lieutenant Chubb or to the chief to say, could you send any extra patrol cars around just to be around schools today? We have some parents that are just feeling anxious and they're on it. We have just great relationship with the police department. After the tragic events in Uvalde, Chief McDonald came down and did a walkthrough of all of our school buildings by himself. He just wanted to just take a look at the stages and to just see are there any vulnerable areas or areas that we can look to enhance with future capital projects? Or if we ever have funds available to do some lower cost things that would enhance our safety? And so we talked about some of those today. I also want to share, I think it's important for the community to know that Chief McDonald is one of about a dozen chiefs across the Commonwealth who serves on the school safety committee. And so we're really fortunate to have a police chief that is so up to date on school safety practices. And we're so happy to have two campuses and two school resource officers who are full time. Some parents are scared that they don't even know what our school resource officers look like or who they are. And so we talked about having a parent safety forum in the fall that would be different than a school committee meeting. So it wouldn't be subject to some of the open meeting limitations that we have. But the chief and Lieutenant Chubb were open to having a parent safety forum in the fall where some of the school administrators, our school resource officers, and other members of the police department would be available to talk about any safety upgrades that we're able to make over the summer, our safety plan, and whatever we can share with our community about what our policies and procedures are. We've also heard from some families that are wondering if we could start a school section on our school website that has just, just a one stop shop for school safety information, including really clear information about making an anonymous report to the school district. I think that right now, our tip now poster that we have posted may seem like you have to have a tip now app to be able to make a anonymous report to the school. You do not have to download the app. You can use your cell phone or your email to make an anonymous report. And so we want to clarify some of those procedures so that it's clear for parents. We'll definitely be working on that school safety website, and I will also share out in the fall when our fall safety forum will be. But certainly any parent that's emailed us over the past couple of weeks, we've taken all of all of the suggestions and feedback seriously, and we hope to be able to answer some of those questions and give our community as much information as we can. Also make sure our students are developmentally appropriately aware of how to respond to any kind of emergency scenario. We did have a couple of questions too about what we do for substitutes, and we do have substitute teachers that are coming in on an ongoing basis. And so part of our subplans are that our classroom teachers need to leave emergency response plans, fire drill plans, if there's any students that have any special circumstances where they need assistance, if they need to be evacuated from the classroom in any way. And so that is part of our policies and procedures. We also talked today about having our school resource officers presentations that they do for the staff each fall reported so that if we have substitute teachers that are hired after the beginning of the school year, we can show them the safety training that the rest of the staff participate in, or if we have long-term sub that come in after the fact, so that that will be acceptable. So I just wanted to share that we, we're not resting on our laurels. We know that there's concerns and school safety recommendations are ever changing. And we want to make sure we're up to date with current practices. And the last concern that I'll share is that I've had questions about why our school district isn't Alice-trained district because that's a pretty common training program. We just wanted to share that that Alice training is a commercial, it's a product. And so our, we have, one of our school resource officers is already Alice-certified and our other one will be trained in that this summer. And we do use components of Alice in our safety procedures, but our police department felt that it was limiting because we don't want to just have lockdown barricade as an option. We want to have options for our staff members and students to be able to take on their feet based on the type of scenario that we're faced with to be able to react appropriately. So we do use Alice components. However, we also pull in other recommended best practices based on research from federal law enforcement on how to react in some of those scenarios. So we're certainly not opposed to Alice, and we do use Alice techniques, but we're not just an Alice district in that. We're not using that one commercial date program. The other information I wanted to share, I just sent an email out to middle school and high school parents that we have reached a point in the DHS principal search where we've identified two finalists. We have a third finalist who withdrew from the process before the next stage. And so the email went out to middle school and high school parents to be able to attend a focus group meeting on Monday or Tuesday morning at eight o'clock over Zoom. So it'll just be a quick thirty minute Zoom session facilitated by either me or Mr. Peedy. We'll figure that out. But any parents that want to come and meet, ask any questions of the two finalist candidates, you'll have that opportunity. And during the day when our finalists are visiting the school on Monday and Tuesday, we will have opportunities for students to participate and ask questions of the finalists. Teachers, office staff, we'll be letting Mr. Wilmington, Ms. Cotton Herman, and Ms. Stubbowski do some classroom walkthroughs with the candidate. They'll be meeting with principals. And anyone that does a focus group will be able to complete an anonymous survey to be able to give any feedback. So we didn't send it out to all of them and Chandler parents, but we understand that middle school parents do have students that will be attending high school next year. Just wanted to update everyone where we are with that. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Awesome. And next we have Assistant Superintendent update from the.
Good evening. On Monday, we celebrated our first year teachers with our new teacher colloquium. So we had approximately twenty teachers who presented, focused their presentations. So we had approximately 20 teachers who presented focused their presentations were focused on social emotional learning in the classroom and how they focused on social emotional, all being with their students and building relationships. And so it was fantastic to hear some of the ideas even at the beginning of the year, how they would ask students at high school to create videos introducing themselves so they could hear how the students announced their own name. Or just how, what was their preferred name and different ways that they shared that students preferred to work. So in groups collaboratively moving around the classroom. And it was really exciting to hear a lot of the great work that's going on in our classrooms from our new teachers. Our new teachers are part of a mentor program that goes through their first year and so they meet monthly. And then they also have mentors. And so that will continue into a second year teacher course. So our first year teachers will be able to come back the week after school ends for their second year teacher course. And that's starting on June 26. And so we will, it's Dr. Clunman, myself and Mrs. Lewis. And so we will be the instructors for the course. And we will be focusing on differentiated instruction and problem-based learning, project-based learning. And that will be a five day course that is in the end of June. And then there will also be one day a month from September until December, which will finish out the course. I also wanted to share that we are continuing to plan for summer programs.
Is that a, is that a Duxbury, is that policy for Duxbury or is that a DESI driven project to have? And I'm assuming it's when we say new teachers, it's teachers new to the field as opposed to just teachers that are new to DPS?
Yeah.
No, so we do include all new teachers, whether they have taught in another district or not. And it is part of something that DESI has as a requirement is an induction program. So the specifics of it is we work to determine the specifics of our program. But that is something that DESI structures DESI and then needs to sort of take some ownership of that particular platform.
DESI initiated.
DESI indicates that there needs, there should be a mentoring and an induction program and then Duxbury determines what that looks like. And how often that our mentors meet with our teachers and what that looks like. And then there are logs that are kept that just shows the work that's done, the topics that are talked about, as well as how much time is spent. We are also continuing to plan for summer programs for Title I students. So we have a three week summer program for our elementary Title I students. And that will be beginning July 18th and runs through August 4th. And it's in the mornings from eight thirty to eleven. And then we also have a two week secondary program that will be in August. And that is running two weeks in August and is also in the morning and focuses on ELA and math for both programs. And that's, that all gone out already. Yes, the parents have been notified of the invitations. And so that began in May and we're working through that process right now. So we have some accommodation of Duxbury teachers. Yes, most of our staff is Duxbury teachers, but we do. We do post on to other teachers, but we look at all the qualifications and ensure that our teachers are, are having qualified. We also have at the elementary level, we use a program and it's through JAVIS. So there is a consistent program with materials. The secondary program is more specific to the needs of the students and the group of students that are in front of the teachers. Not that the elementary program isn't specific, but there's a school difference because it's three weeks. The extended period of time, there are materials that parents can take home and then they can choose if they want, would like to continue to work students on the different topics that are provided. We, I also wanted to share that DESI has been working with organizations such as Overcoming Racism and CLE, which is the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity for training focused on culturally relevant and sustained practices. That training is for DESI staff as they are working together. And so subsequently, DESI has begun to review and edit the current educator evaluation rubrics and is suggesting changes to the current educator evaluation rubrics. For next year, DESI is providing pilots for the building based administrators evaluation rubrics. And the pilot will take place during the 22, 23 school year. And then during the 23, 24 school year, the classroom teacher rubric will be piloted to reflect these changes. And it's anticipated that the updated teacher rubric will be introduced for the 2024, 2025 school year. This does not mean that Duxbury will adopt this evaluation system, but I just wanted to share that these are some changes that are taking place with DESI and some suggestions that they will be sharing out to districts across the Commonwealth. And then lastly, I wanted to recognize staff that were recognized during our, by their colleagues. And that's Matt Flackberry, Katie Porish, Ed Sparpino, Heidi Apiero, Chris Burke, Tori Crossen, Julia Vanilla, Mara Doyle, Kate Dunn, Melissa Pilarde, Kathy Help, Katie Sterrier, Jess Teagle, Teresa Raftery, Katie DiNardo, Max Wayne, Carly Walsh, Amy Holbra, Jason Mandangian, Ms. Canzano, excuse me, Mrs. Muzahan and Dr. Flubak.
Local talent being recognized. Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Appreciate it. Next is the Director of Business and Finance, Mrs. Swede.
So I have just a couple of brief updates for now and then a couple more for finance in the later section. So first, bus registration for the 22, 23 school year has been opened and registrations have actively been coming in. We've had just over 500 families register for transportation already for next year. And we'll continue to send out notifications to remind the remaining families that require transportation, that transportation is open and that they do need to register regardless if they are required to pay or not. That way we can grow appropriately based on need. Additionally, the truck project at the Steel Complex has received one bid for the work. Mr. Reed at the town has been helping the school department with the bid and contracts associated with the project. And we expect the work to commence between the 15th and the 20th of this month and to complete no later than August 12. So we are very excited for that project to be coming to fruition.
Is it the same company that installed it originally?
The company that's doing it was like in the steel.
I don't remember the bid the original. Requirement for paying, you know, it's based on distance and the under grade. Based on the older age, is that statewide? Like is that based by the company or?
No, it's the state company.
So we don't, districts don't need to transport students under two miles.
Yeah.
And then we don't need to transport students after grade six. Our educators are excellent drivers. I'm just the most fascinated by where they've gone.
Most students have options for students to be able to take them up. It's just not required, which is why we have a DBA service. Not for this update.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Next is our Director of Special Education, Mrs. Swede.
Some exciting moves is the CPAC board. We have a new board in place and so we might be able to just recognize Jen Leader and Kate Sheehan as the co-chairs. Kate Reynolds is the secretary and Shannon Molesa as the treasurer. So it's very exciting that we have new board members and they've already kicked it from running. And they have a parent event on June 13th. So this coming Monday from six to eight at the Town Library in Maryville. So they just wanted to do a meeting read. Everybody is welcome. I sent out one of their flyers already and going to resend that again. But very exciting. They are very enthusiastic and really excited to support students and to work collaboratively with the district. And excited about their enthusiasm. One thing to know, they have shifted and I changed their names on the website, but they found that for their website or for their email response, they're going to do one central email address instead of a chair, a secretary, a treasurer. And what they will do when families email is respond with their name and their work. So if you, I'll announce it, but I'll also put it up on the website. But it is capital D, Duxbury, CPAC, S-E-P-A-C, at gmail dot com. And so they have one central email address for all board members. And while we're planning, they will sign off with their name and their title hopefully to make it more seamless and easy. And just to let you know again, they have a meeting read on this Monday from six to eight. So this is June 13th at the Maryroom in the Town Library. So I'm very excited. This is a great opportunity for families to connect into meeting board. Just a couple business parts. The special education survey has closed. I know the consultant is just looking at the numbers and respondents and you know, she's just starting to dig in. The fat close last Friday, June 3rd. In terms of an update, the language base program is in finalization. Our consultant, Dr. Nadine Exter was out today and she was doing some in-person interviews with parents. Couple of parents were interested in being interviewed, were not able to stay with today. So she is emailing them separately to follow up and to make that connection. But that program review is also coming to sort of a wrap. So that was great. Some of the targets we hit to get these pieces in and done this year. And then we'll be getting reports and data and pieces, you know, over the summer to be able to talk more about in the fall. And then the special education extended school year program is also well underway for planning. Parents have received their student schedules, their service deliveries. We're in the process of hiring and finalizing our hiring for all of our physicians. So we still have a couple teaching physicians, light physicians open. So if people are interested, please feel free. It is posted through the same avenues inside and outside of the district as Dr. Will Foxton. Parents should be expecting to receive at the start of next week, just the ISY handbooks of Nutribolts, Drublog and the medical books. So just pay attention to your email. You'll be getting those parts of pieces that we can square away the last visit pieces. But that is all I have, my update. So.
How, how did, how was the final tally on it? So like a lot of numbers that responded on survey.
I actually am not sure. I haven't asked, but she will let me know. But I appreciate your help in telling parents to fill it out. I am with, you know, coming home in the different methods and manners. So thank you.
Yeah, we figured at some point, this is our last meeting of the school year. Maybe you could send it to us. I'm just curious. Sort of like the five.
Breakdown between how many.
You know, how many you sent it to, how many responded. Okay. And next is update from our student representatives.
All right. Last weekend, class 22 students celebrated graduation, which could not have happened without the help of study staff to the fall. Program, police and parents. Today, the freshman class included their second session of biology FBS. Further, superintendent's advisory met today and impromptu meeting, Mr. Donovan to discuss and deliver trades. We'd like to see the new principal and also what actions. So I would say we'd like to see our new principal take going forward with the coming school year. Spring sports are wrapping up. Our tennis team and lacrosse team are advancing to the playoffs, but lacrosse is only 22 before.
Can you share some of what you're looking for in a principal? Like what's some of that feedback?
Yeah. So a lot of what we said was school spirit and I guess just presence within the school. Cause they know Mr. Donovan did a great job for the last couple of years, just, just being there almost. I know it sounds really simple, but just having someone to say hi to, having so much people to talk to. And also going forward as we, I guess, recover from like COVID and like being like in lockdown. Just being able to have like, good like school like bond and a sense of community when we haven't had it for the last two months.
Yeah, I'd say the same is what Michael said. A really big theme was being able to build relationships with students. It's their like the main base really at high school. So, which is again, like Michael said, something that you, Mr. Donovan has done a really good job about. And then also definitely like continuing with the improvements in communication, like, you know, Mr. Donovan's weekly newsletters have really helped with a lot of kids. So just kind of a continuation of all that transparency and communication is another big thing.
And then what I have is on May 25th, the newest National Honor Society members were inducted for the upcoming year and it's 82 students. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, the newest members of the National Honor Society, along with our school student council, will have a joint study session for the freshmen, sophomores called Eliminating Learn, which will allow them to get tutoring for their final exams. And those final exams start Tuesday, June 21st and go through Friday, the 24th. And our official last day of classes are next Friday, June 17th.
So what happens, this is total curiosity question. What happens with, this is our last school committee meeting of the year. Do you guys come back in the fall or does it change up? Like, how does that work?
Well, last year I came, I came back.
I don't know how it works like in terms of like, are you elected?
These are not elected positions and so they continue to serve.
There's no pressure, but we started in September.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm not trying to game the system, but we have, it's been a real treat having the new focus representatives. And we did get you on the website.
I saw that. Yeah.
So if you do come back next year, maybe we can, when Dr. Clunman and I have thrown around some ideas of making that page a little bit more detailed around like, you know, what your aspirations are and what to think about what to do. Anything to help with any visibility, we'd be happy to help with.
Thank you for your love. Great.
I think last week, the, the second graders got to come over to Alden to see the school. And there's, you know, fifth grade has two student council members for each class. And those kiddos got to be ambassadors and show them the school and how proud they are to be there. And then in the evening they repeated that. And I just think it's a great, a great thing that the schools do. You know, shout out to Mr. G because I know he oversees the student council in fifth grade. And I think it gives those kids a lot of autonomy to feel like they are making valuable kind of, you know, impressions in school and they, they get to do various things at their age. And I just think it's, it's a really neat thing we do with having those, you know, so many schools are paid for five and ours aren't. So I think it's, it's such a big move for these younger kids. It's really nice that they sort of incorporate the older kids to get to welcome.
The more I'm on school committee, the less, more I realize that the less I know about what happens. So that's, that's great.
Well, I think it was, it was missed because I know kids who did ride. When we talk to the second graders now, we have a little girl in our neighborhood who got to do it. And she was very nervous about this transition to Alden. And she was nervously talking about, you know, the pen pal writing. And then she came home from that field trip. And I hope that's a true to most of the kids, which was, it was so great. Everybody was so nice and so friendly. And it just, you could just see it sort of like washed away that anxiety that she had had. So those touch points along those transitions that I know some kids didn't get in the same way over the last two years and those transitions are back. And I think it's, it's really exciting for the students. And how, and it shows how valuable it works, I think, when they're not there.
All right. Thank you, you guys. So I just have a few, I have a handful of updates. One is to, I also wanted to acknowledge the concern around safety. I can't think of anything that's more important. There is nothing more important than, than student safety. And so all I wanted to make sure that I, you know, add some clarification around is that it's a, it's a common interest and we welcome and embrace all concepts, all questions, all comments, all in the interest of ensuring student safety. all in the interest of ensuring student safety. I sort of think of it as a three-legged school, uh, school. Law enforcement, the administration and staff and parents and things. So I was delighted to hear that, you know, Dr. Klingman is working with law enforcement to together, together a forum in the fall that is designed for two-way communication. I mean, I don't know the particulars around safety. I'm not supposed to know, and neither are you. And so I think it's going to be a very helpful discussion to sort of understand, you know, that we have, hopefully that we have a very well planned and thoughtful process in place to help keep our kids safe. Part of that is probably, my guess is, is probably sort of an acknowledgement that there's some stuff that we can't help. And I think that's fine. And so my guess is, is when we have those sorts of discussions in the fall, there'll probably be a ton of, I know there'll be a ton of questions because I'm already reading them on Facebook. And I think that they have to be asked. My guess is that we probably won't be able to, we'll take our lead to law enforcement and administration certainly. But there are probably some things that are designed intentionally so that we sort of don't know the total particulars. Yeah, go ahead.
We actually, I spoke with a selectman this weekend and the chief is actually going to have an executive session with the select board in with us. So we actually will know what all this is, but we can't have it in public of the reasons that you're saying. But I think that we, as school boards, will.
So there's going to be an executive session for.
Yeah, we've done it before.
Departments of the town.
Yes.
Okay.
Over what this will say to us.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
I think the, I think the point that I'm trying to make is that this is a discussion. It's not only worth having, but we have to have it. And so we welcome the opportunity to have it. The, the timing is, might be a little bit unfortunate in that this is the last meeting until the fall. But I don't, I would hope that everyone who's listening to this understands that just because we take a few weeks off in the, in the summertime, it doesn't mean that, you know, we're not thinking of ways in which we could get into the kids' safety. So there may be a lag in the discussion, but that doesn't mean that the wheels aren't in motion around making sure that we have everything in place to ensure that kids are safe. And then lastly, on the, on the subject of safety, we have a policy subcommittee. That's a two-person subcommittee. It's made up of Kelly and myself. So we're a, we're the faction of the school committee that's in charge of sort of making the sausage around policies. So if you go over what's second click on policy, you can see dozens and dozens of policies. I would urge and invite everyone to take a look at our policies as they relate to safety. And if you have questions, write those things down. Come to us with questions. Kelly and I are, you know, committed to meeting on a regular basis to make sure that we're updating policies and ensuring that policies are in compliance and that we're doing the right thing. Sometimes we'll miss it. So anything that you can find that we may not, we welcome suggestions. Okay. Awesome. Just a couple of words about graduation. I thought everything about graduation was excellent, except for the fact that I got a sunburn because I didn't bring anything. But I just wanted to say it was, it was really, it was, it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful ceremony. I really enjoyed hearing all the speeches from our, our students and our, and our faculty and our administrators. You know, just a huge shout out to Mr. Donovan for sort of leading that charge, leading that team, not only to put the event itself together, but to make sure that we were all able to sort of recognize everything that, you know, sort of culminates into that event. So I really, really enjoyed it. A D E I steering committee. So this is sort of a little bit coincidental in a good way. But later on in our agenda, we're hearing from Ms. Sheehan on her update as D E I coordinator. Coincidentally, some of you may already be aware that the town has an exercise of having its own D E I steering committee. And that's been kind of quiet over the last few months. So Fernando Guitard, who is the chair of the select board and also I believe chair of the D E I steering committee, he held a meeting. I'm going to call it an impromptu meeting because I know it gave a lot of notice. But I was able to, to attend it last week. Only four of us were able to, to come. High altitude review of that meeting is that the steering committee was able to, he awarded some funding, I think it's in the tune of like $12,000. And that money is going to be, I, I think mainly attributed to finding a facilitator and a facilitation company to put together some sort of a, of a forum where we can, just like the safety stuff, we can have some two-way dialogue on D E I. And so I asked the question, what is the purpose of that, of that meeting? And he said, well, the purpose of that meeting is really to understand what our next steps are after the meeting. So it's a little unclear to me when that meeting is going to happen. My spider sense is tingling and I don't think it's going to happen to the fall, until the fall. But, you know, we'll make sure that we keep everyone updated, updated to the extent that we can among that committee representing we as a school. Superintendent evaluations, I just wanted to thank everyone in the committee for some real last minute focus, focus in, 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 in putting those evaluation documents together. I know it's a lot of information to sit through. There's a lot of evidence to look at. And so I really appreciate you putting all that information to, together. The last item on the agenda tonight is to do the superintendent evaluation. So that'll be just a compilation document that hopefully captures all of our, all of our bases. One word on, on meeting follow-up. This has got a little bit of connected tissue to what Mrs. Linwood was, was saying, but just to a different cast of characters. So sometimes things get lost in ether. You know, when you make a suggestion, sort of like, what happened to that suggestion? And that's not just limited to the community. Sometimes that happens here. I've been on school committee for a few years and I can sort of think back to times where I've said, oh, I have a suggestion. And I'll get all the, this is my suggestion. And I'll make the suggestion and nothing ever happened with that suggestion. Probably because it was a bad suggestion. But, but, you know, I sort of reflect on it. It's like, what happened to it? So one of the things that I would like to, to see happen moving forward, and Suzanne, this involves you, is just, so just, just like when, when we just voted on the meeting minutes, I would encourage all members, if you have something to say, if you have a suggestion and you think that that suggestion is worth being memorialized, take an extra look at the minutes. If it doesn't make it in the minutes, it doesn't mean that everyone did it on purpose. It was just probably because it wasn't really like a tangible action item. But I, I, my theory is that if any suggestions that we have are put into the meeting minutes, then that sort of raises the level of accountability that the eyeballs on it. The other thing that we can do is we can actually on the fly ask for it to be in the meeting minutes. So if we make a suggestion, there's no harm or foul in saying, you know, Suzanne, would it be possible to put this in the meeting? So it just gets recorded. So it's just sort of like a procedural way of trying to ensure that things don't sort of fall into the pit of despair. And we sort of lose any suggestions that we have. Because like I have some great ideas, they just come at the last minute. So I just wanted to show. Okay. Any questions, Governor? Second to last thing, the M A S C puts together an annual conference. And I know that you and I had, Dr. Will Foxon and I had done some emails around that. It doesn't happen until November. But it's a, it, from, from what I've seen on the agendas, and I did attend the last one, it was virtual because of COVID. It's pretty cool. It happens down the Cape. It's in November. And you just see all sorts of representation from districts all around the Commonwealth attending different general sessions and different breakout sessions. And they range from everything, like how to communicate better as a school committee, to more sort of compliance-based stuff. And I think, you know, Duxbury arguably has sort of been underrepresented at that conference in the past. So I would like to.
Preco that I went every year.
Except for Mrs. President Hand. So like, you know, moving forward, it would be great, I think, to make sure that we're represented at that conference. Because they, you know, we get some great ideas and, you know, we might.
I think it's great that you brought that up right now. I think inevitably what happens is the date comes up and all of a sudden people have plans. So if there's a way for us to share with, I haven't gotten to go for that reason. So I would love to put that on our calendars now.
It's November, it's in November, it's in the month of November. Yeah, Novemberish.
Six, seven days.
Yeah, I think it's sort of.
It's a Thursday through a Saturday, a Wednesday night through Saturday. And you can go, you don't go for the whole thing. Some people go and they stay on the Cape because we're so close. My gig has been like, you can pick Friday, Thursday, Friday, like if there's something that you want to. Yes. Like I've gone, I loved Jim Rowdy. I went one time, he was speaking, Mark Healy spoke once. You can choose which. So you can choose which day to go to in, in the district case board. November 2nd through the 6th. 2nd through the 6th this year.
You must not lose the headline in district those.
And you can have lunch there if you want, if you have to. Sometimes they have a lunch speaker or they just have a general assembly speaker. It's actually pretty cool. And you pick your break out. You can go in the morning, you can go all day.
Okay. All right. So we're all going to go down the Cape in November. Perfect. All right. So lastly, I just wanted to open it up for discussion. Does anybody on any sort of liaison team or even outside of liaison team have anything you'd like to share or update from any of? Oh, yeah, you're on the agenda. No? Okay, great. All right. So good. Next door, this is unfinished business and we have none. So we're going to transition right over to new business. And we are going to start with our D E I coordinator report. This Caitlin Sheehan, would you like to approach that? All right. We're happy to have you.
Happy to be here. I do want to confirm, I'm not. You know, there's a lot of she and. A very different teaching.
Oh, there are.
Who may or may not be related to me on this one.
It's a big plan though.
It's a big plan.
So you had, you had slides, a week due in or do we not need?
I'm going, let you go them on the screen if I can and for the people watching at home. A lot of things I'm navigating here.
Oh, yeah.
I think it started well. So thanks for having me. I'm excited to be back. I feel like it was a decade ago that I was here, but it's only this September. And I do remember leading off with, we had a speaker, Dr. Adolf Brown. And I led off with his quote, because kids. And I do just want to reiterate that because that to me is the why. Right? That's why we're all here. And that's really the crux of D E I work. I think we hear a lot of different noise about what is this? What are we doing? What's going on? But it's a way to support kids. It's a way to build community and connections and relationships. And really important to me, it's a way to provide opportunities for deeper learning, opportunities for students to tackle rigorous experiences and making sure that, no matter who they are or how they learn, that they can show up authentically as themselves and tackle that rigorous learning and do really incredible things and have pathways to be awesome. So that is the crux. I also have a really incredible mentor, which is here. And we started the year and he said, you know, okay, we're going to be an architect and we're going to be a firefighter. And that really resonated with me. And I took that to heart and that's really how I spent the year. So an architect meaning proactively working to look at our student support services. How are we supporting our kids, especially in the wake of COVID? What learning opportunities do we need to enhance to ensure that kids are touching that to where they need to be? And beyond that, right? We don't just want to be where we need to be, we want to move forward. And looking at, you know, what, what's the person? What's the content? What's the way that we're teaching it? How are we using inclusive practices? I know Dr. Will talks a little bit about Desi in the evaluation rubric. So looking at those culturally responsive practices so that students feel safe and comfortable being themselves in the classroom to tackle that coursework. So that's, that's the architect piece. And the firefighter piece is not as joyful. We know that things come up, day to day, that people make comments that are hurtful, that are biased, that are insensitive, some that are downright racist. And so I really have a, we have a great team here. We have incredible teachers. I've been lucky to be supported by amazing administrators. So really working together to establish protocols, to meet with kids when stuff like that happens, to make sure that the student harmed feels safe and feels supported. But also making sure again that there's accountability, but there's also a learning opportunity. Kids make mistakes. They do things their intent might not be harmful, but sometimes the impact is. And really working through and having conversations with kids. Hey, let's learn this lesson here where it's safe and you have people to back you up. And providing kids really good leadership opportunities, they made it safe. But now moving forward, if this happens again, you can go and stop it. You can intervene, you can get out of standard. And really building that self-confidence in all of our students. That's the year in a very quick nutshell. And I'm going to share, so I thought I would share what I was most proud of, some accomplishments. And then I would share an area of growth, just some feedback I received. And then the big part of what this year looks like. So I am most proud of our students. They are, I have nothing to do with them. They are envious. They are empowered. They are brilliant kids who want to share their thoughts, share their ideas and change the world. So it's been incredible learning and listening to them. And in a specific tangible that I want to talk about, I have one student who approached me about creating a student advisory board. She had attended several different, one with the M I A A and then one summit in Lehman. And there's several other districts like Newton, I think Wellesley, they have a human rights council. And she's like, hey, we don't have that here. How can I make that happen? I'm like, well, you came to the right person. You want to make it happen, let's make it happen. And she actually, she took part in this leadership opportunity at MIT. And she really dug in on how to do that, how to legitimately make it happen. Which I thought was a really awesome opportunity that I'd love to share with other kids. So we'll use her to dig in on that too. And so she's created it, she's planning it, and we hope to execute it next fall, which is awesome. That empowerment and that engagement. And then of course, on the other side, there's professional growth. So we were lucky enough as a district to participate in the teacher diversification P L C with Desi. And really that enabled us to look closer at how are we recruiting staff? How are we selecting those staff? And then how are we retaining those staff to bring in different perspectives? And I think sometimes we hear that we're diversity in diverse staff and we think about race. But how do we expand that thinking? How are we bringing in people from all across the country? People maybe outside of the offshore and expanding that definition to bring in people who I really think it's important to be challenged and to hear different things. So how do we bring in staff who can challenge us and help us grow and move forward? And then area of growth. So what I heard a lot this year, not a lot, but enough, was lack of transparency and communication. And I will say that lack of transparency, if anyone who knows me, I am pretty authentic. So it does crack me up a little bit. But that's absolutely a valid statement, right? The communication out, how are we sharing with greater meaning-making within the community to the larger community? And I do think what I've struggled with, for me, D E I is not an extra. It's not just another thing that we're adding on. It's not like this, oh, okay, this is another initiative. This is true student teaching and learning. This is how to be critically engaged. This is how to have conversations with people. So I want it really to be embedded in all that we do. And so to share out, it felt a little unnatural to me because it almost feels like, oh, it isn't an extra thing. But I recognize that feedback is important and listening to people is important. So I developed a website, which I hope to post on our homepage. And it basically, there's a lot of pictures of kids, which is really important to bring to life. Because they're the best part of our day. But there's a lot of our work that we did this year with the D E I council, which is a group of stakeholders at the school, stuff that I did with teachers, different learning opportunities, different projects that kids were doing. It got really showpiece with students, empowerment, engagement. School committee policies, it's just really like a hub of anything that relates to D E I. To go to learn and ask, if you need to ask questions, it's important to me. And then I had a really wonderful meeting yesterday and we decided office hours in summer would be a great idea. So just sharing out some times with the community, pop in, say hello, let's chat. What am I missing? What do community members have to offer? Really, again, I think I want to continue, most of you know, I grew up here. I want to push us forward. And I think hearing from the community to do that is really important. And then looking for communication for next year. Again, just leveraging, leveraging that website for continuing updates. And then maybe at the office hours, if successful, continuing those things for the year. And then the last part, this is going to be the biggest part of next year, which is our equity audit. So we spent a lot of time at the beginning of the year, the right consulting firm to use us to really help us navigate this process. And we are lucky enough to land with Clee, who is a veteran for leadership and educational equity audit for violence. They were also super cost-effective, which is just an added bonus. And so really what we'll do is the equity audit is really a deep dive into policy, into practice, into student experience. And what I love most about Clee was from the get-go. They were like, this is about kids. We want to hear from the kids. We want to hear what they like, what they don't like, what they want to feature the school. And so that really was a selling point for me. There'll be focus groups that people can get involved with. There will be surveys that people can. There'll be focus groups that people can get involved with. There will be surveys that people can fill out. Um, I would really, I know we don't have great turnout with this survey, but I would love for as many people. I think when I say all perspectives, I mean all perspectives. Um, so I want everyone to kind of partake and let that be really a community way for us to create this plan again. To look at where can we improve, celebrate what we're doing really well, which is a lot of things. And then where can we improve and let us that plan to move forward.
Excellent. Questions? Um, discussion?
I'm, I'm the, I'm the newest liaison with Kristen to the DEI committee and I just love, well, first of all, I think you are the perfect person to lead this and I applaud you for taking on this role. And I mean that seriously. Um, and I love how you say this isn't something like extra. It's not, you know, to me, and I'm older generation, like just treating people the way they should be treated to me is a no-brainer and the fact that we have to point out certain behaviors are unacceptable or hurtful or, you know, we've had a lot of incidences at the middle school and high school level. We've all read about them. Um, I won't belabor the point, but I, I think it's great that we are examining life, school life industry. It's my first work.
What would the student advisory committee for like sort of like look like or what will their? Absolutely. I would love to invite Jane in in the fall if that, uh, and let her really speak for it. She can speak for it.
Yeah.
Far more eloquently than I can. Um, but her idea is, you know, there's, one of her ideas is, you know, there's women's history month, there's Black History Month. Is, is there an opportunity for this student group to create activities or to put up posters? Or to, you know, bring windows and mirrors into this, um, school community to celebrate and have like joyful moments about different opportunities that we don't regularly have in the classroom. Um, I think I would love to leverage those students for feedback consistently. Hey, how are things going? What's missing? What am I missing? You see things very differently than I do. Um, and really that, the school is the kid's school. Um, and so how do we create those opportunities for them?
Um, I had a couple of questions. First of all, I think that this sounds great. You've got a lot of momentum in your first year. Um, I was curious about the equity audit. So when you spoke, when you presented in, in September, you were planning one. And I guess my assumption was that because you were planning one in September, we would have had one. Um, so you mentioned that you were going through a sort of a label process and found CLE. Um, did that not meet with your expectation? Like we hadn't, were you hoping to do the equity audit in your first year or was it always?
My plan was to be really concise and specific about who we chose to help us do that. And so my kind of global perspective on it was use this year to identify, I can dig in and identify, there are a number of companies. Um, bring those companies to the DEI Council, like I said, speaking of staff and community members. And what do you think? What does this look like? Uh, there is a preparatory process, which I was not aware of at all. I had some free power to pick whoever I wanted.
Yeah.
Um, but then obviously going through that practice meeting with Dr. Will, talking to Dr. Flick and then figuring out who we're going to go with. And then again, going back, um, to the DEI Council and saying, listen, this is what CLE is saying, this is what they envision. Does this match up with your expectations? Hey, what's missing here? Um, and they gave, gave great feedback. We had a couple of things on Zoom and they were like, oh, you know what? That's going to be much better in person. Can we change that? Yes, absolutely. Hey, how are we going to identify, um, the stakeholder group who's going to be a part of the audit? Should we have an application? Digging into what those questions will be, uh, will be. Um, so I think, I firmly believe for change to be sustainable, sometimes it takes a long time. Um, and being detail oriented and being really explicit in what we're doing and how we're doing it. So we can do it really well.
Yeah.
Um, so this fits perfectly with my time. I will pick it up in the fall. It should be about six months. So hopefully by February-ish, March, um, we'll have a really nice plan in place.
Uh, and then the other item you had presented back in the fall was, um, which I felt was really interesting was a potential teacher exchange program. And I think it re, and I think it sort of leaked out to me because New Orleans was mentioned. Uh, did that, did that, did that end up going anywhere?
That hasn't not gone anywhere unfortunately. Um, but that's definitely still, that's like a dream for me, right? Of how are we bringing in, without necessarily diversifying the people that we hire? How are we allowing our staff to get different experiences outside of the faculty community? Um, to see and celebrate what other districts are doing really well and then bring those other people in here. Again, I think that gives us, that helps us see things that we're not able to see. We all have our blind spots. So bringing in and doing that trade-off. Um, I also think probably New Orleans is a little ambitious and so maybe we.
I noticed you also.
We do have a connection to New Orleans, I will say. So once a school year, it's another way. Things, you know, you get the weeds quick.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but looking maybe at our community closer at home that we can make it happen. Um.
Okay.
We have two schools that we're kind of connected to through our DEI connections in town. And so there is a teacher from Duxbury, who's a teacher in New Orleans, that had indicated she was interested in having her school do an exchange with us.
I like her already.
And we have, um, a connection through C N D C with, um, the Alford Del Mar School in Bedford that, um, we can do a more local connection. So I think that, um, I don't know that we were thinking we'd be able to do that this year, but I think that, um, that might be something either for grant funding or coming to, um, you with an overnight field trip for, for some of our teachers to be able to go and figure out how we can fund that opportunity. So that's a little more complicated than, than year one, but it's definitely something we want to do.
Well, I, what I would say is that it, it would probably be helpful to consider figuring out how to get you on the schedule with a little bit more regularity over the next year. Um, the first year, first part of the year and then like right at the end of the year is probably cool because you, you're building a new position. It hasn't been created before. So like you said, there's a lot of growth opportunities to figure out what works and what doesn't work. My suggestion would be if we can meet with you, like, and if it's like a quarterly basis, it creates some shared accountability that you know you're working on. We can sort of do check-ins and you're feeling like that sort of good pressure. Uh, and I think that would benefit the community too, because I think that there's probably, you know, tons of people in the community who are rightfully curious about the work that you're doing because it is a new position. So I think the more we can make sure that we're amplifying the work that you're doing, the better.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think that will be important too, as we go through the equity audit, especially, right? That people have access to the survey results, to narratives that come out of focus groups, to, hey, we're thinking of planning this. Um, you know, the plea has a really specific way that they do things. Um, but I had mentioned that our, our DEI meeting, that doesn't mean we don't have an additional focus group. It doesn't mean that I've set up meetings with other people. Um, I feel like my best asset is always willing to sit down and talk to people. And so I really do, we need to feel like, hey, send me an email, let's set up a meeting, let's chat. Um, and making sure that everyone's voice is part of that equity audit is really, really important.
Great.
I just thought since that's a message that again, this is not an initiative. We're not committed to just sort of specification here and there. It's supposed to be an integrated component of everything we do in the district. So if you could be a more regular part of our education, of our learning and our presentation at the community, then I think that articulates what you're trying to do.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Great first year. That's awesome. We'll see, uh, we'll see you next year. Okay, uh, next order of business is the fiscal year 2022 financial update from.
Um, so during my first few meets here in Duxbury, I've been, um, working on reviewing the fiscal 2022 budget. While I will have exact numbers to share when we report out, um, in September, the final FY22 financials. Um, my financial budget does, um, is healthy. Um, and we're at this point, continue, we're closing out the fiscal year. So we're, um, monitoring the budget closely to ensure that expended expenditures are allocated to the current clients. Offsets are adjusted appropriately and, um, we, um, we call them recasts. My terminology is web transfer, but same thing. Um, so those are, um, occurring and that we hope to possibly replenish um, to the cabin, the special education reserve fund. Um, so things look good for the budget for this year. Um, so we'll be closing out, um, early, kind of mid-July. Um, we'll, we'll do a couple of warrants transactions between July, just based on the nature of closing out the year, um, so that we capture all transactions, um, that for June 30 activity. And then we'll start, um, into the new fiscal year. Um, and then, um, I learned since our last meeting that I should be reporting updates on the warrant activity. Um, so since this date left in March, we processed five warrants. Um, do you want me to read them all? Okay. In, thank you. In, in the, uh, in the school committee.
Okay.
In the school committee folder, there is, um, a memo with an update and they are listed on there.
Okay.
I can just tell you there, there are five and the total amount
Yeah.
is one million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents for the eight, or excuse me, for the five ones.
Share the exact amount with Suzanne. We can include it in a minute.
Yes.
Oh, good.
And fortunately Suzanne gave one to me, so.
So much inside baseball, I can't.
All right. I have a question. Did you, are we looking that we, is it looking as if we will have a surplus at the end of the year? Is that what you said for the sped?
For the sped, the special education reserve fund?
Yes.
We are looking at, we would be able to opt out.
Okay. No, no projected dollar money.
Not here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes. Just very like it, because this is alone.
Yeah, we're on page one.
Hey, that brings me to back, I wanted to have another meeting, but you know, I served the pleasure of it, so this is. All right. So the rest of the line items are all, um, decisions. So they're all, they're all motions. And since I, um, I think very obviously stated that the voting process, here's how we're going to know. It's pretty bad. So here's what we're going to do. Uh, when the agenda item starts, I'm going to make the motion and we'll get a second and then we'll listen to the presentation. That'll be part of what the discussion. So then after the presentation, then after the discussion, I'll repeat the question. That way I won't forget and that's the way you're supposed to.
Okay, now I'm.
Okay, so.
No, I, I know.
Actually, I'm going to role play. This is how we're going to do it.
I, I, I get it.
You do? Okay.
Sorry, Alex.
All right. Okay. So, um, may I have a motion to approve the DHS November 2022 overnight field trip for history?
Go move. Second, yeah.
Say it, say it. Second. All right, great. So now we can have discussion and that brings principal, not to be principal much longer.
I keep telling them these are replaceable and we keep saying that's not true, but.
It's nice to be here. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Alberti, um, to answer any questions that you may have about the field trip to Washington.
It looks great. It's the U S history two.
Uh, yeah, U S history two students. Um, and it's a, it's a, uh, expansion of the previous hall transcripts that is a seller usually. Um, it's far broader as far as the scope of the interior. And the, in the proposal, there are three different price points, which really, as it says, comes down to which, um, tier ultimately of hotel is available. And how far outside of T C next step. And so, um, we have 90 students who expressed an interest, which is probably up to 35, 40% of the class. Which is a fairly significant number. Um, we've never attempted to take visiting trips. We've never really attempted trips as large during the season here. Um, and he's been working with a company for about two years to help the possible itinerary. And so he feels like we've got a good, uh, good model. Uh, we can support it with staff or chaperones. So what's, so what goes?
Um, do you have any questions? I have questions for you next. So when, when November?
So we're, we are, we are working, um, the proposed window is really after most of our fall sports finish. So somewhere in the last full week before Thanksgiving week begins. So there's this kind of like magical period where really only football is still competing. So because we don't want students to self-select out the opportunity, well, but there, there's something to be, because Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
At a minimum. So we want to make sure that our, our kids have that ability. Because if we go after Thanksgiving week, the first week of winter sports, so there's this generally most of our playoffs, most of our teams start playoffs in the last week of October, first week of November, and most of them are done by mid-November. So it's looking for that weekend, um, the weekend after virtual state.
Okay, so you're looking at the weekend?
Yes, looking to bed over weekend. So we start.
Cause that is, the, the reason why I bring it up is that I know when I shoot teams to do it on the weekend, I want to just go to school. And, and, and if you've got so many people that want to go to this, I just, you know, would be concerned with the weakness of school. It sounds like we're trying to do.
We're trying to miss as little school as possible.
Okay. Okay, so, so the weekend is sort of like the high, sort of, the, the weekend is the objective, is what you're saying?
Yes.
If you don't know, that's okay. You can always come back. If there's 45% going, that's.
No, I believe, I believe that is the case.
Okay.
And the junior, U S history two?
Yes, and eighteen two.
Yeah.
Eight nine two.
Any other questions?
Is it 90 students are interested?
Yes.
Or do they cap? So do you think?
So that's our, um, yeah, so we are, the proposal is based on max of 90 students. This, get a group this evening. Mr. Alberti is going to have a, this place at a parent meeting of all those who express interest, uh, next week. And to start to go through those logistics and then we'll see the actual number. I suspect, I, I'm not sure. We've never done this. We've never done it and now we know. So we'll, we'll see the actual.
Yeah.
The running goal versus actual.
Okay. All right. So the question, the motion is to approve the DHS November 2022 overnight field trip for history. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed? Motion passes. Hold on. Tell them, congratulations. All right. Uh, can I actually hand a motion to approve DHS April 2023 overnight field trip for French? Discussion.
Here I am. I'm going to answer any questions.
Oh, Diane's here.
Oh, yeah.
Hello.
So the trip, the proposed trip is to Montreal. French teachers and they're native owners, they need, um, organizing. And it's four day trip to Montreal that includes some service, um, and a kitchen. Opportunity for service learning and then also, um, an opportunity to connect with the school. Be aware to know that the students there, the students will connect with that school prior to the trip. So they'll make connections with the kids prior and with their, their brothers. Four day trip during the vacation. So they'll, you know, the school at all. And we budgeted for, um, three, uh, three tiers. So 18 students, um, there's a class of 2,035. 20 students goes down to 18, uh, 22 students, which is what they sort of capped at the max. 1935 and, and there's, um, three complimentary chaprons.
I, I will, I forgot to include that in there, that, uh, the cost per chaperone. So I have those numbers and I would provide them to you. Okay, I forgot. I don't know why I didn't include it.
Well, you're, this is like your last month, you're mailing it in.
No way.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, so I, I, I have a question. Um, I, I noticed, I didn't see an itinerary.
Well, the itinerary is, there's a link that.
I can just pick up, I can.
There's a link that you can click on.
Oh, there's a link to see the itinerary?
Yeah, so in the, I sent the initial version of that document and it was linked.
It was, okay. So I apologize that I didn't get that. Is there any, um, I'm sure there is. This is an award question, but it is Montreal. I, I used to live in Montreal when I was 18 and it wasn't to do French. Um, but I just want to make sure that at night there's plan to make sure the kids are safe and aren't playing wrong.
We're using a reputable tour company with a guide.
Yeah.
That's the one with us and, um, three chaperones staying in the hotel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the trip will be for June 1st, for family sophomores. So I understand the concern that with all these trips, we can, you have school rules upon and very strict, um, Have school rules upon and very strict guidelines to say break the rules at home.
You bet your eye.
And the parents will be.
I will say, having been on probably overnight trips for the last twenty years, like, I've been on trips to reset kids' home. Who are being in the wrong places. We have stayed in the heart of Times Square, New York City, Washington, San Francisco, right, right in the water, but. We got that issue of students getting out of the hotel at night. So I thought that was not a certain bit.
Great. Anything else, any other questions? Yeah, well, I did miss, hey, it's all about safety. All right, so the question is to approve the DHS April twenty twenty third overnight field trip for French, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who opposed? All right, so motion passes, what a, congratulations. Captain Kirk is from Montreal. Captain Kirk is from Montreal. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the Ducksterry Middle School Improvement Plan and Handbook, please?
Go move. Second.
All right, I'm sure we had. Hello, Sarah.
Hi.
How are you?
Well, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I haven't talked to your soul before, this is.
That's exciting.
No school council?
Today? Uh, not tonight.
No, okay.
No, but, but.
But they're alive and well and thriving?
They are alive and well and thriving, yes.
All right.
We're actually in the process of, of share, uh, getting the school council set for next year, by the end of this year. We have two open seats moving in the next year, so.
How's that going?
Um, really well, I've got some good interest there.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so it's based with that in the next meeting, we'll be able to share out still states.
Meaning like the leave election?
Um, we're working that out right now, okay.
That's good, no, I'm glad, I was, I've been trying to push it out to lots of different places, I know not everyone reads the newsletter, so.
Shame on them. I appreciate that.
Well, there's Facebook class pages for almost every class, so. Wherever you could put it. Let it get everywhere, so I was hopeful that that might have worked.
And we are supposed to be there, I'm glad. Um, I think the handbook is listed first, do you?
Oh, it's up to you, whatever you'd like to do first, separate handbook.
Uh, sure, so I'll just, I'll start with the handbooks.
Okay.
Um, I shared with you all the memo and the changes.
Yeah.
Proposed for multiple handbook. And just to summarize, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but just to summarize, there are a number of. Uh, edits that I proposed that have to do with personnel and titles and things like that, and then some language that I was looking to update. So looking for consistent references across our handbook. For instance, instead of just saying parents, same parent, same guardian consistently across the board. That was at, in places one way and then in different places another way, so. You'll see that we have added the DEI committee's language for the handbook as well. It came out of the committee work this year. Basically affirming our commitment to ensuring that students, staff, that our community are, it's a welcoming one, right? So the language to get at committee. Clarified a couple of things on school to home communication, just to make sure that they're consistent with what's actually happening at the middle school. The school council, uh, we worked on some language around tests and quizzes in the middle school handbook specifically. The collaboration of house teams to ensure that we're not overloading students in their experience of assessments in a single day. So we strengthened that language around expecting teachers of team level to coordinate with one another for assessments across the board. We added a section on student expectations. This mirrors some of the language from the code of conduct as well and includes it actually in the body of the handbook. As you know, the code of conduct is a separate sort of addendum to the handbook, so we wanted to include some of that language in the handbook itself. We updated information on accolades and then the fourth and fifth and sixth pages refer to some of the updates that came out of the. Darkness to light recommendations in the handbook, so some updates around procedures with volunteers and social activities and chaperone. Expectations, those types of things, the language recommendation that came out of that. That assessment that was done by darkness to light beginning. Is that over the summer and then throughout the year?
Yes.
So how many other questions?
Any questions on the handbook? Um, so this is for you and for Jim, so I had, because I don't want to do like the whole soliloquy that I did last time. But did you get it, did anyone tell you about the soliloquy that I made to Erin and Chase? Did that get to you?
They have been listening.
You might have heard it, okay. So, so then you'll know that I went through Erin and Chase's handbook, not to be like a busybody, but I just wanted to just sort of go through it and I found like some stuff, which is normal, we always ask that, right? But that's why it occurred to me that I, you know, I thought I saw an opportunity for some just process around, around the handbooks. Because when I asked Erin and Chase, it seemed like the process was essentially principal, like I'm seeing an opportunity for changes, I'll run it by the school council. They're cool with it or not, we have some discussion and then we make the changes. But, you know, I don't want it to get lost that, you know, we have a new DEI coordinator, we have a special ed person, so I, I think of those people as subject matter. And so my recommendation would be, if I'm moving forward, my recommendation would be when you do, when you consider handbook changes, sort of route them to your subject matter. Caitlin wouldn't look at them for typos, but Caitlin would look at them for. You might look at them for typos too, which is great, but you know, you're looking at them, certain things are gonna bubble up to you that aren't gonna bubble up to anybody else. Heather's gonna look at it, things are gonna bubble up to her that aren't gonna bubble up to anybody else, that can only help. Then you get them back and you go through a second draft. My, my further recommendation, and I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just making a recommendation, so Suzanne, put it in a minute.
Man.
Would be then to just like route all four of the handbooks just through like the copy editor, your chief, when you get them on fire or a lot of work or whatever. And then that person would make sure that like all the grammars are totally spotless and consistent. Because if Martha's the copy editor and she goes through all four handbooks, she's gonna make sure that they're consistent in tone and in grammar. And lastly, you could then, you know, throw a little extra change to the copy editor to maybe tag like the A heads and the B heads and stuff. Because I would love to see if we do end up redoing the whole website with the town, which is, you know, being chattered about. It might be really interesting to have the handbook searchable on the website. So a parent can come in and like type in tobacco or something like that, to understand what the, sort of the handbook says about tobacco. So you want to, hand these down? This is just the cover sheet I gave to Erin and Chase with all the corrections that I made, but I do do your corrections because. I, I, I hate myself, but not that much, so I didn't want to. So hopefully that makes sense.
It does, and I appreciate that feedback and actually on the share, I'm excited that my co-chair of the school council, Ms. Christian and I have had actually a couple of conversations. And also as a larger group around the parent perspective of the use of the handbook. And sort of thinking about, I think it was written with a certain lens of the school and the school administration. And then when a parent needs something, how to access that as effectively as possible. And so we've sort of, I think, had some really productive and meaningful dialogue about, well, this makes sense with my hat on, but in your experience, when you need to know X, Y, Z. Because your kiddo came home and said this, what's the best way to get to that? So searchability feature, I think, sounds really interesting for that. And the school council, I think, has been just really helpful in engaging in that, like, actual use factor within it, that it's a resource for people.
Yeah, for sure, it's like, sad percent. Cool, any other?
Question, this is gonna show, I haven't had a middle schooler, so, but, um, do the kids sign that they've like looked through, like is there a code of conduct that they sign as well? I know, and I assume in high school, a parent sign that they received the handbook, they go through it, do our middle of high schools do the same?
So at the beginning of the year, we call the sign ops that happen through the Aspen Information System, that's a part of that. For the parents, and I believe as part of that, they're affirming that their child has also been aware of that process. We also do review it at school, specifically with the students through an assembly beginning year, it's part of our kickoff to the year, reviewing expectations. In a class and staff goes through certain sections.
Yeah, so I have a similar question, having started in middle school. Just trying to understand, Danielle and I, we've all talked about this a lot, I think about figuring out a way so that there are lots of opportunities and touchpoints for families in the district. To understand information together and have places to discuss everything such that, I love everything you're talking about. I was starting to think about, as I read through a lot of this, that. Beginning of the year is a lot of signing and reviewing and all these things, right? So everything just sort of gets shuffled along the paper route and I think of now, as I'm gonna have a child in each, and lots of parents have children in lots of different schools and it's completely all the love. So figuring out a way, not only for the school council to really be actively engaged in the way that it sounds like you're encouraging your council to be. My hope would be that staff would also be actively engaged in looking at this, because my focus again, this is partnership, right? We're all operating under these kind of same ideas and parameters, so to make sure that that, there's a place for that where it's actively discussed as opposed to kind of the, hey, take a look at this, let me know what you think. And, and maybe not as engaged as, as I think we all would hope to be, we maybe don't have the time.
Sure.
And the other thing I would say is that as these are now kind of revised, it feels like next fall, hopefully. If things remain normal as they seem to be right now. I think having. I remember as coming into Chandler, there was an opportunity, you went into the cafeteria and there was kind of a presentation, because you were a new parent in the district. What I would say is each time your child moves to a new school, you feel a little bit like the rookie parent to the school. So even though I feel like, yeah, nail Chandler and all that, coming into a school was like, I literally don't have a lot of ideas about what's going on here. And I think this year was unique because it's complicated, but the more opportunities there are, are kind of constant. Discussion and integration and learning around these kinds of things is gonna make, I would hope, it's gonna build the community, it's gonna make parents feel engaged, it's gonna make teachers feel empowered, you know, to. You know. Make sure that these things are actually being. Implemented, and, and, and implemented in a way that is consistent across the board. So anyway, that's a really long way of saying, I hope there's lots of room for opportunities here for parents to be engaged in the handbook, maybe more than they have been or are, and also for school council and building based. Community building around these kinds of things.
I appreciate that, in fact, we, uh, last fall at Open House, we ended up inviting folks early to talk about social media, because we're seeing that as a topic as it relates to the handbook and also just. Strategies to support families as they navigate that with kids. And we also did a couple of virtual coffee with administrators and sort of a, a topic based opportunity. And those, I agree, those were, I think, a successful way to sort of like open that door in real time with relevant topics at the time. And so I do hope to be able to continue and expand upon that in the future.
Excellent. Great, so did you want to transition over to your school group?
I'm happy to. Um, so I had, I shared with you the entire plan, but I had two items on a slide deck that we could project if we want. But I think I shared with everybody. Just highlighted two specific areas, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the entire thing. And so the two areas I just wanted to highlight, one was in the pillar of advancing learning opportunities for all students. Specifically the implementation of our intervention program at the middle school with math and English or literacy interventions. So this school year is the second semester, I was really pleased to be able to leverage two of our staff members to. Provide targeted intervention to small groups of students during the academic support block that we carved out into our schedule. We, I worked with the curriculum supervisors for the math department and the English department to determine how, what measures we would use to identify students. Those measures included. Local data points, so like benchmark testing included MCATs data points. And also included teacher feedbacks, what are they seeing like right now in classrooms, students that need some extra help. And working with the curriculum supervisors to identify these, these groups of students. We carved out over the course of this semester between six and eight week sessions, or where that teacher would pull this group of students. During one of their academic support blocks, so they still got two others in the rotation to get other things done and see their teachers. For some targeted intervention based on their area of need. And then we use some measurements depending on if they were math or ELA and which grade level. To determine if the student at the end of that period of time had sort of hit some goals, filled some gaps, gotten some areas of need met. And then released them either back into their regular academic support or continued them on. And we had students, we had a handful of students continue on for multiple sessions, because they had multiple areas of, of need that we were working to target. And we had lots of students transition through one chunk of time and then move back into their regular classes. We have not been able to do intervention models such as this before at the middle school. We didn't have the, the space that wasn't pulling from other classes to do it before. And we didn't have the, the personnel available to do it in real time like that. And so this is, I was really pleased to see us able to implement a sort of a pilot model of what I would like to expand upon with our. Added positions for next year, where we'll be able to hire people that can really expand upon this model. So I was able to do a semester of it. And one academic support period per grade level, I'd like to see that significantly expanded with the two added. Two year physicians that we put into the budget to be able to continue this next year. I also want to add that as part of this work with interventions, we were working, I know Dr. Wilkerson spoke about it before, we were working with the TLA. That was doing a, a number of professional developments for our curriculum supervisor and leadership team folks to bring to teachers and then also with departments. To implement effective interventions in the classroom, so real time, data driven, expanding of the toolkit to help students in the moment as effectively as possible and differentiate as effectively as possible. To look at that sort of two avenues towards the needs of students. Any questions on that one?
Uh, I have some questions, but do you guys have any questions?
Did, was there any teacher feedback in regards to kids who are behind because of COVID? Or is it more just general education issues?
Um, so we, we looked at. All different data points and we didn't necessarily isolate due to COVID, but what we tried to do was prioritize. So the first session for both ELA and for math was our ten or so, ten to twelve, I tried to keep it under fifteen, really small group. Kids that we thought were the highest need based on those data points. And then the next session was sort of like the next tier of that, the next tier is that. The. I suspect that our staff would have leveraged this opportunity for students before COVID. As well as after COVID. So it's hard for me to like specifically say due to COVID or not. Based on the kids we supported, but there were gaps and the idea was. And the idea was that targeted intervention style could either address that skill, review that item, improve that confidence. In some cases, it was really boosting basic skill confidence to come back into the classroom of that and address that need.
So I, 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 I am going to ask a question and I don't want the interpretation to be that the focus on differentiating learning to provide supports is, is not important. My question is sort of, I feel like a lot of this, and I imagine that it is potentially sort of coming out of COVID and the perception of the need to sort of provide some additional supports. So I guess my question is on the flip side of if kids are not receiving additional support in academic support, what are they doing? And, and are they, are there opportunities for kids to have access to push, to push in, you know, to more challenging opportunities when in fact they aren't receiving support in the way that these sort of are taking over here? Or did I miss that in your?
Yeah, so no, I appreciate that question. Let me, let me clarify. So during academic support for all students, they have time to check in with teachers. The way we designed at the middle school is the entire middle school is off during period A. What that meant was that students were able to access any of their teachers that they have and their teachers were able to access them. So across the board at each grade level, my students were distributed across their team. And then each team had a system of getting kids where they needed to be. And they each did that a little bit differently, but sort of, I'll give the example of one of the seven three teams that's sort of an office hour setup. They worked with students during the class periods to sign up for that day's academic support. So they knew they were expecting 10 kiddos for math help here. And then those five that were on their roster were, this one was going to social studies and English. And so in, in real time, they're getting extra help on their ongoing classroom. The intervention that I am talking about here was, was targeting a skill deficit that needed more intensive support than just extra help with the teacher staying after school, getting the work done, making up the test, doing the test corrections, those types of quicker check-ins. And this had a, for math and English, had a teacher specifically designing instruction based on the student deficit area. So that's different, but in that area, but that does not mean that the kids that weren't in that intervention weren't getting extra help or support. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I guess I'm going to be really sort of blunt. I guess what I'm asking is what do the, what do the kids do if they don't need extra help or support in a particular area at all? Or, you know, what is their time at academic support spent? What are the opportunities for them outside of extra support in whatever avenue that might be?
Sure, I understand. Thank you. I know you're referring to the other end.
No, 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 sorry.
Yeah, so, so they had time to get work done. They had opportunities to get ahead on assignments, which I know some students did. We're actually in the process of building out some additional module-based experiences for students moving forward because we identified our focus area was on the need here and less on if we were in good shape.
Yes, nailed it. Okay, good.
Yeah. Yes, so.
Hear more about that.
So Cheryl Lewis, who is the Director of Strategic Technology, and I have been working on modules, developing modules specific to the digital literacy curriculum frameworks, for instance. So if we have a vertical look, we want to use Schoology, which is our learning management system, to build out some modules and think about maybe like badging those, they're sort of like points in some incentives to work towards at sixth grader, these types of things. Seventh grader, we build upon that. I've also been engaging with Lou Alberdi, who's a social studies supervisor. There's a lot of civic project-related items that the state frameworks are highlighting. We were thinking about modules in that area as well. And so we're working to build that up because we want to have that sort of built in for students to access.
Awesome. Great. And I would encourage you to think about and articulate if there are resources outside of them that you have in any of those areas that would be helpful in producing that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Excellent. Just add to the TLE piece of it with the in-class instruction. But also as part of the TLA work with the teachers, we talked about how teachers can provide differentiated instruction to different students as they're working. So that could also be for students who may need, who may be understanding content and may be able to go deeper. So asking those inferential questions and really pushing students who are understanding content but then are able to think critically in a different way and where they are at. So really asking questions and knowing, after asking questions and understanding the content area and what the students are understanding at the moment, where to then go next. So is it scaffolding of the student needs in order to move forward? Is it maybe some inferential thing that students need to be able to, to push themselves? So that's part of the differentiated instructional pieces that we were looking at and, and working through as well.
Thank you. Students have shared their voices on some of the ideas that we have around that as well. I had a seventh grader reach out with a plethora of educational needs.
They would like to have access to.
Yeah, and he's done everything he's supposed to do. What about this like math practice game that's also taught?
Which is great incentivizing the stuff.
I have a, do you want to ask any questions? Better, just like a few, just a few questions. So, and I'm just going to go sort of in order. So the, the first question is around the exploring the implementation of digital literacy. This is on a pillar too. Explore the implementation of digital literacy coaches to. And so, but my comment is that, and I brought this up before you guys, like that's a continuing thing. We're constantly, it seems like we're constantly exploring digital literacy coaches. And I'm skeptical that we're ever going to get them because it's, it's like, it's overhead. That's like a hard ask to ask for new staff. So I would like to see, and I'm, I'm not going to put you on the spot, this isn't a gotcha question, Sarah. It's more of a comment that I'm also going to make to Jim. It's just like, I think it would be interesting to see if we can give some thought to alternative ways of integrating technology besides the literacy coaches, because I just don't know if we're going to get them. I've been doing, I've been on the committee now for a few years and it goes back to the beginning of the last strategic plan, like digital literacy coaches every year, like we're recording it. And so, you know, and, and it's a bit ironic because it is technology. So like, what are some ways in which we can explore the use of technology to get technology integrated? So I, I just think that that would, that yearns for some sort of exploration. So I just don't know if we're going to get the coaches. The, the other question I have, this is very similar to the question I had for Chase and Erin the other night or a couple of weeks ago. So you talked about intervention for math and ELA. And the process that you gave was great. What are the, what are the plans, if there are right now, on sort of family and parent optics into that intervention scenario? So to me, intervention means like, you know, we're using diagnostic tools to understand where the strengths and weaknesses are. If there are weaknesses, then we've got a grade system in the school for individualizing instruction, tackling that instruction. The thing that I'm hearing from parents at all levels are, wow, I mean, I've got kids who have taken all 12 grades. I've never seen the diagnostic. So, and maybe they're missing it, but like, it sounds, long story longer, it sounds like internally there are wonderful systems around intervention. And I just wonder what plans we have to expand that to families and parents so that we can hold them accountable, as they probably want to be held accountable to help support the learning at home. And so I think, Danielle, you might have the same answer that you had a few weeks ago, which is there is some opportunity. I think we have somebody on staff who lives Aspen and does that sort of analytic stuff so that we can start to maybe push some of those results through Aspen, right?
Yeah, so we, and we also have Linkit now, which is a portal that not only gives another standardized data point, but at the secondary level, we don't have a lot of diagnostic tests the way we do at the elementary level. And so the secondary level, we are finding that we're only working with them, have data and common assessments, which can be a little bit varied, depending on how they're administered from class to class. And so I think with the Linkit data, and then when we're doing the student intervention data, certainly within groups of students that we're doing the intensive intervention with, we're using diagnostic assessments and some digital assessments to be able to monitor student progress. But I think that that Linkit, the intention of that is to house a lot of the assessments so that the parents will be able to access more scores and have, have those reports go home to parents in the whole of time.
That's great. That's awesome. That's great. Um, the, under, pre-under program expansion, Sarah, you've got explore ways to provide additional ops for students in STEAM programming. The one question I have is what traction have you guys been getting out of Codecad? Because that's free, right? That's a free resource for learning.
So this is actually a course that we built out this year. So that, this was the other area I was hoping to highlight today. Because I recall some feedback to me, maybe a year ago.
It wasn't even in the minutes.
Around the STEAM programming.
Yeah.
And, and thinking about how do we get more kids access to that? And I just have to highlight Anna Valdez, who's our STEM teacher right now. She has done really incredible work to revive our curriculum and really update elements. So in the past couple of years, we've seen a significant increase in the number of students continuing from sixth grade STEM and STEM one and STEM two. And this year, because she had so many students, she explored actually breaking apart the curriculum to, to a computer science elective. But we didn't want to call it computer, computer science because we didn't want kids to kind of wait for events. We called it Codecad. And it's sort of targeting some.
Oh, so this isn't the codecademy.com that you'd see, which is free. Okay, all right.
She's built out a curriculum using a number of different resources and used her students in sixth grade STEM and STEM one to ask them like, what would you look for that's different than what we've been doing to sort of target? And it's that, that the computer science, the language of coding.
And what kind of traction are you getting?
So we're going to run two sections next year of that.
Oh, so it's starting next year?
Yeah, so we put it into the program of studies this spring. And students did their course election. We're going to run two sections and we're actually, we saw a slight drop in STEM two, which I think is representative in some of these kids, but broadly speaking, their numbers are consistent across the STEM curriculum. And actually this week, on Tuesday, she took all of the STEM students to the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute for this amazing field trip. Vineyard Wind came and was collaborating with the Woods Hole scientists and made the students were able to do different like lab activities and different stations and learn about data and engineering. They, it was an incredible trip. Let's bring some pictures online if you want to check them out, but really cool opportunities. The kids are very interested in this. Ms. Donovan and I have been having a number of conversations. A number of conversations about how we're, we've got this group of students who have really engaged in the STEM program heading up to the high school and as they filter in, pointing them in the right directions to expand their computer science program to the Oceanographic Institute.
That's great. That sounds like a really, really good start. That's awesome. Since you have that momentum, I would encourage us to, I'd mention this last, like in the fall, but I, I looked at the website again for the STEM Advisory Council. It's a, it's sponsored by Massachusetts. And so they do things like STEM Week, right? So you can go and we, the last STEM week was in October and I was watching some of the stuff on it. And the thing that caught my eye was that, you know, the Baker administration is pretty invested. They gave, that week, they gave away $250,000 to different schools that attended. It's like Beverly Hills, it's spoiled. It's bubbling up. The money is bubbling up. So if there's any way that Anna or anyone else could, could attend that STEM week, I think it could really be worth doing. We, there is, that same program has STEM regional networks, so it's kind of like NASC. So you have your own field director that can advise like on how you can get STEM stuff going here in Duxbury. So I just think that there's some real momentum that you're starting and it would be great to capitalize on it. And some initiatives that I think the state is, you know, has an appetite to help with. So it would be really great. So awesome. Wasn't that, that wasn't that hard? All right. So the question is to approve the DMS School Improvement Plan in Handbook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Or nothing? Suzanne, motion passes. That's Yahtzee. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the DHS School Improvement Plan in Handbook, please? All right. Hello, Mr. Donovan. Principal Donovan. Sure. Did you see that, did you see a Return of the Jedi with the fish guy? Like, he's like, he goes, "General calories, principal Donovan." Close, it's like 1983.
I was there.
Principal Donovan. Okay. So did you want to start with the handbook or your school?
Sure, absolutely.
Oh, no, whatever you'd like to do. Want to do the handbook?
Yes.
Do it.
So there's actually two sets of handbooks, one is the athletic, the proposed changes to the athletic handbook and then to the student handbook. So the first part of the student handbook changes, which were done by the school council. First, before I begin, I just want to recognize Martha, this is her final meeting as a part of any school board. She has been, she's on the DHS School Council, actually the coach of this year. She's been on probably every PTO organization in history.
You'd never know.
She used to live across the hallway.
But I just want to thank her for all the, her work at school for the last two years, but she has left the nominee.
We have the Subcommittee of Finding Expendments. It is, it will be the first fall in the, in this century that the Dennison's don't have a child.
In this century?
Yeah. I'm sure you won't.
Silly.
So.
I was not going to.
The first part is very similar language to the high school handbook, but that is on the middle school in the corresponding pages. Cheryl Lewis had asked them to improve the workspace description on page 12, page 13, which is under the empowered user agreement, just in sense there. The darkest delight recommendations. So they have proposed, we have a list of student behaviors that go from the interest in midterms to where it will progress. These are, we modified, if you are familiar with their recommendations or, or reviewed them recently, we changed the voice of the recommendation so it mirrors the rest of that section. But the, and we consolidated two into one. But it just makes more sense. And then we decided also to revise number 11 in that section because of the. That's there. There is a section on credit loss. We had anticipated we need to make a change here two, two years ago when we changed our schedule six periods a day. So we have a, our existing credit loss procedure says that if you have more than 10 non-issued absences a year, or more than six and a half, you're forced to lose credit. And that, that definitely shoots a workflow. Losing credit means that no matter what grade you're in, it doesn't count for students who lose credit. Using credit means that no matter what grade, it doesn't count for graduation. So depending upon the course, they let me pre-certify this. We always work with students' families and attendance, department of attendance contract. Reality is we've got six classes a day. We have far more opportunities for students to accumulate absences by missing a day. So the rough equivalent between, between our previous policy and this proposed one is you name on 17 days on six day schedule being absent to have the same number of class, the same proportion of class absences. We felt that was too much, but we did experience this year a massive, significant increase in the number of students who entered credit loss across, across all grades, across all types of students, right? High form, you know, just right in middle back, if this were struggling, it was not unique to any sort of demographic. It had really everything to do with just the rotation of the schedule. So knowing that we are going to change next year to a schedule which more resembles our pre-COVID schedule, the five day rotation, five periods a day, this is really a one-year fix. But we think it makes sense and it just kind of alleviates a bit of unnecessary paperwork. It's just a function of how often the schedule classes. So that's, that's the thinking behind that. We intentionally left, Jake is a junior now, senior, he will pay attention to the number of absences, issued absences. You can have a course which before happened to, you have to retract all that certain. So if you have a higher than a 90 average in the course and fewer than three absences in a half year course, or four than five and a six to that full year course were exempt from the exam as a senior. It is a major carrot to make sure our students are, especially our seniors, that we attend this. So the school, the council, in proposal changes, we left that language in place. So while we are admitting this for credit loss, we're not changing the thresholds for exemptions.
I'm not saying, no, it's highly illegal. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a, all of our AP students are also exempt from their exams by nature of taking the exam. That is, yes, both are. So the, the last page are two kind of additions. One is really to reflect, and both of these are to reflect our system practices, right? For years, we have, in fact, for the entirety of time I've been here, and probably began shortly after Return of the Jedi was put out. We began, the teachers began doing overnight, overnight trips. They would often invite us with police to come in, have luggage from the night before, or they bring the canine dog to make sure that there was no drugs or anything that's across the state lines. Really just as a way to encourage good decisions before leaving to go on break. This addition of this language here is to just simply reflect that. This is our standard. All of our overnight trips for years have worked this way. Luggage comes in the night before, we invite, in fact, we've tweeted about it for years. The, our dogs come in and they, we partner with Tulon County and our SRO, they come in, the dogs slip around. It's a good training for them. It helps. It's good for our kids and really we don't have issues and that's a lot of fun. So we've never had any issues with parents about it. We've never had any issues with kids about it. And then when they come on the day of the trip and they get on the bus, we have no containers, we have nothing like that. So it's really just to discourage, especially when people are flying or leaving or somewhere far away. We just are trying to leverage or to leverage everything we can to encourage good decision making so that we don't end up someplace in a very complicated situation where we're not in control of the environment like we are if something were to happen on campus. And that really gives the heart, the second part, which is the dance. So this section about the prom of senior night out reflects what we've done again for a very, very long time, which is that students recover the prom. Any of their kind of like bags or the money, get, you know, search to make sure there's something in there. We ask the gentleman to pick up the coat so we make sure there's something tucked in the coat. Dog, your pockets, make sure there's something in there. And we're just trying to leverage what's up or protect against, discourage kids from making bad decisions. And I would say it's still possible that they happen and I've been there when it's happened. But we're trying to make sure the greatest, safest, wired possible. But one of the things that over the last few years we've not done as well is as our purchasing for things has become more digital, like this year we bought tickets digitally. There was no more like, we set a written prom contract that everybody signed. But we have to, in our, in our desire to make things more user friendly, we have gotten away from like all the disclosures that used to be present and we need to go back to figuring our way with all environments for all of our activities to put all those stories there so everyone, those parents don't, kids don't before they do it. And our Go Fan site, which we use this year for the prom, for senior night out, does allow that. We just simply didn't think about it, didn't think about doing it. So that's something that's in our workflow for next year and that's the thinking behind these two questions. And then the final three are really just to simply reflect the fact that we've had lunch in the cafeteria at the crib. We did for seven years, we never took it out. And that really is those three in the section for that. And for the athletic handbook, I would make a real pitch for, to start by saying, I want to thank the school committee for creating the Athletic Advisory Council last year and last fall, authorizing it. And it has been a wonderful experience for those who are involved. We have great teams for it, great volunteers, four meetings over the course of a year and very good discussion. So it was a very good experience. And so these changes came out of that committee. We voted on in the April, or April was late April or those names. So the first is that same inclusion statement that you've seen. The second is to add a basketball school level for that short. But to reflect that unified basketball will be a new sport next fall. We've had unit track for a few years, it just has never made it into the handbook, including it. User B section, page 11, we're going to, Mr. Maven, is purchasing some software that boosters have provided in a grant to buy some software. We're going to barcode every article of uniform and clothing that we give out to kids. And it's going to be scanned out to them. And so we're going to be able to digitally track our inventory and also when, so we have better ideas of when everything is purchased, how long it's lasted, which team's been on, who's had it tracking. Because if you do that all by paper, one of the problems that we have found over the last year as we're looking at kind of our long term, like how much are our athletic? One of the tasks that the place gave us this year is like, how much is our athletic program really cost? So part of the problem is we don't, determining what our uniform costs are over a five year rotating period has been very difficult because stuff gets bought piece meal and, you know, here they're everywhere. We also have gotten to choose where stuff has gotten, they don't want their manufacturers of products anymore. So we have to, instead of just buy four or five pieces of a uniform, we have to buy everything again. So we was going to have a more systemic approach to how we track everything and how we buy. And started to buy in some cases more customized products so that we can more routinely get them on a yearly basis.
That's great. And it hits the equity issue. Where parents say, you know, the track team hasn't had any uniforms for X amount of years, but football has or whatever.
Yeah, and so we're just trying to get a handle on how all of that works. A difference, of course, different. The tennis does get a new shirt every year, but that's because their shirts are relatively expensive and the kids buy all the shorts, so we don't buy any shorts, right? So that expense relative to other teams is, is not a lot. But, yes, visually it can be jarring. A change in the captain selection process, right? Which is that kids are now, if they want to be considered for captain, are going to have to say that they'd like to be considered. And then also to kind of make a pitch to the team about why they'd like to do it, provide that in a statement ahead of time.
That's not at the meeting, so.
Yep. To awards, you may have seen there's boosters, Mr. Maven, have started to do some, there's a desire to bring back the old varsity jackets with the white sleeves and the green that Phil Adams on. So they have a vendor and kids are starting to buy them again. So they just wanted to reflect that that's there. They added the Super Bowl Coach Award. And then at the recommendation of the nursing staff, we include a section where they're under the care of medical provider that can't appear to play unless that's been signed on.
Record setting. That's great. Any questions on the handbook? Do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Waltson, your student improvement plan?
Just seeing Waltson.
Sorry, my brain always goes.
It was in Return of the Jedi four. So the, it's a good one, Waltson and Tilda. So the, so three big things for the high school. One of our school improvement plans this year was under PE health and wellness, was the direction of the wellness fair. So three years ago, Mr. Ogier came and asked to revise the records requirements for 12th grade and to create a health care supplement for life, which was some standards which were in a, which were included in the proposed PE and wellness force for 11th and 12th graders that we really struggled just by the number of facilities, but also the physical space to actually operationalize them in a way. So we had, we were all ready to go with the health and wellness fair in 2019 or 2021. Pope charted staff, it was scheduled for the first week of April, close up weeks before that. Actually, we were on, so it took us two years to get back, but ran this year for the first time. Our seniors participated in a workshop in, with Chris Sullivan in the Presbyterian Hall, where he talked about substance, so journey of substance and being an NFL player and the impact it was here in life. It was wonderful. With Redford, their health snacks and with that program in the cafeteria of the high school. And then the kids selected workshops and listed the workshop providers here. We had some great community partners from county suicide prevention, the Duxbury Fire Department, it's incredible. They were in two, an arcann training, they told them shark attack first aid, it really was like stop it, which is a. That's what it sounds like for me, you're kind of moved up and they were, they were absolutely awesome. Chart Wells, which was a bright for the district, sent the dietitian out and ran workshops for the transition to college. And what the people at that level. There's an organization called, there's an organization out of East Bay that came and did a workshop on helping getting relationships in college. That was fantastic. And, and then Nike came, Gatorade came out, Super Bowl for, for Athens. And so kids went to two sets of workshops, but they had selected, it was awesome. So I just want to highlight that with the, it was great to see something four years into planning finally actually happens. Awesome. Similarly, the, this was our first year where we really had the internship, kids get out with the community. It was awesome. This is an area, a faculty element, and this file is tackled right away, which is for the district. And this is the first year where we had kids out, they were at several of the companies. They're also listed here, actually part of our two kids. We had students doing, essentially student teaching experiences that all did EMS. Part to the student becoming, part feeding, a student doing manufacturing, implement defensive concepts. And then a student working with Devlin Solar out of Dino. And those kids got job-ready skills. This is in addition to a program that we had brought for many years, which was called Student Service Project, where kids to volunteer out in their entire fourth quarter of the year during service. And we had two kids out this year, which was great. That was, we used to have seven or eight kids a year that would go out. That program also stopped during COVID, so it has come back to life. So we're just really pro to have all those kids out in the community as much as possible. And because the way our schedule rotated, they could get these, those kids are clustered in the double block this semester. So they're out for two hours at a time, which allows them to be out more frequently during the day. And then in the fall semester, we have job transition. And then finally, I hope, the shame still being here, I just wanted to include some of the work we did this year with her support. We had a lot of work to do as a high school, as a community. These are some of the things that our kids worked on with, with her. But actually, but it wasn't just with her, it was with our local different advisors, with the guidance staff, with all of our coaches. It was with Mr. Maven. It was with the community and our local hate group that does most of the work outside of the school. They're looking to get that straight face toward the school. So we made some real efforts, which made a real difference and it's the beginning of it. And so, so thank you all for the support, kids, support teachers.
Great. A lot of activity this year. That's great. Questions, comments on the DHS School Improvement Plan? So I don't have much that you didn't already, that I asked Sarah. One question I have is on pillar two, Jim. Where you talk about the TLA and the coaching and supervisors around differentiated instruction and PE for that. Have you guys been able to land on what the frequency of the classroom observation and the coaching is going to be? So the reason, and the reason why I ask, maybe this would help inform your answers, like, it just seems like, especially in high school, emergencies come up all the time. When you, when you get to a place where you have coaches at school who I guess are going to be eventually observing classroom instruction, I guess would be then doing some sort of follow-up coaching engagement. You know, this week we did great, here's what we should think about. And then ideally a follow-up observation to, you know, ensure that that stuff's being integrated. That takes a lot of time. Is there like?
Our consultant was here every three to four weeks for the entire year, so exactly that. So every day she was in the district, she had every supervisor, supervisor, assistant as well.
Yeah.
Did learning walks with them. She coached them up on conversations with the teachers, debrief with them, talk with teachers. And so that happened all year. And then it's a, it's a large group that we've been at at least three times, everyone together to kind of debrief. As a big group, set goals for, our initial goals were about how to find differential instruction as a school. Because the definition of it has changed for many of us depending upon how long we've been here, which workshops and PE we've been through, what we're through there. So what was going to be our definition for the most high school now? What do we mean now? They should be targeting workshops in every department specifically of that content. How to differentiate, how to find it and how we differentiated the teachers, which our staff loved, absolutely loved. And then she was there working with our supervisors to help, to help to develop skills in them so that they can build that within their product and foster that.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at. So when the consultant goes away, is there, is there a plan? Do, do we then sort of grow our own coaches and house?
That was this year, that was part of the work this year is to build the capacity within current faculty in order to be able to use protocols, to be able to work together through protocols. So that everyone is classrooms, we are identifying if there are objectives or something that we're looking for. And then how do we go through the protocol and talk about that and then can be separate. And then also to be able to identify the different purposes for one working in classrooms. For example, we are in classrooms throughout the year for evaluation purposes, but then to be in classrooms on a regular basis. So again, the goal is to try to be in classrooms as much as possible.
Yeah.
But as you acknowledge, there are things that come up, but we want to be in classrooms consistently. And so to be in classrooms for various amounts of time, whether it's a two or three minute walkthrough and just noticing what you see and then the. or three-minute walkthrough and just noticing what you see and then the, it's talked about. And so really what we're looking to do for next year is to continue to build the capacity within the curriculum supervisors to be able to do, um, that work, but then also to work with our teachers and to be able to provide teachers time to observe other teachers so that they're observing their colleagues and really being able to talk about the teaching that's happening, um, within classrooms and to collaborate amongst, um, teachers with the support of the curriculum supervisors. And so we're working with, um, the plans to work with consultants in that capacity. So we're really expanding what we're doing so that we're, we're making it applicable and working with teachers in that way.
Great. Okay. So there's a plan to be able to, once they're gone, to be able to sort of build in that work throughout these consistent observations. That's awesome. Um, the, uh, you know, the, the point that I missed with Sarah that I, I meant to raise, um, also applies, Jim. So, you know, the, um, you talked about the COE, uh, the literacy coach has been requested to move forward, right? Um, one other thing I meant to mention besides the STEM stuff from the state is, you know, I've had some really energizing conversations with people in the town. You know, we've got a woman, we've got a parent here who works in the aeronautics department at MIT. We've got a guy who, um, is a high-level manager, but still knows how to code and codes for fun at Amazon. And both of those folks, my guests are other folks, they've got a really appetite to be some, to, to be part of some sort of apparent steering committee or focus group around how to get closer to the instruction here and then get the, you know, get students interested in what, in what they do. So just like the, the STEM, the, the state sponsored STEM stuff, I think there's some real sort of appetite from the parents and the families on, you know, one, you know, it was funny, I, I emailed the, the woman, her name's escaping me from MIT. She said, oh, she's, you know, you know, she said, I was thinking about it because I just signed my fourth grader up for a summer program, like way outside of Duxbury. You know what I mean? So like there, there, there's like a want, there's a, there's a desire and an appetite. So, um,
I would say, um, just to piggyback on, on part of, um, a part of that, especially the habit of the school. So, you know, as you all know, right off, our plan is to develop out of that, out of those, so a lot of the stuff that comes from actually the last part of it, uh, building those stuff, it's very original. So that, that part of the literacy coach, that's where it comes from.
Yeah.
And so, um, and it, it will be that way going forward with, uh, the new strategic plan. You know, that stuff will live in all of this, but it's just how, that's how the, that's how the design. Um, part of our, uh, one of the other goals in here was to increase our computer science offering. So we did that through the budget and the support. And so we're in the final steps now of trying to hire new, uh, sides to the high school.
How's that going? You getting any interest in that?
Yeah. So, so we are, um, we're hoping to finish that process. So our hope is to have three teachers at the high school, um, that will be able to work as a team with, uh, you know, Mr. Fowles as a pro op, and we're working in that, that should make that, that have a more robust programming robotics experience. Um, and to, uh, also that with what Mr. Fowles has learned this few years, that's, if you, he's TV technology stuff, but he's also taken on some of the programming and CAD work. And, um, so as we look towards next year, because there's been such growth in the middle school, in their STEM programs, our new preschool staff members and start by having one of their classrooms will be in the middle school to two sections to help bridge that gap, to get students into the high school and into the programs. We've worked into computer science courses that we've run probably in 10 years.
That's great.
Next year, we'll be running AP Java, running, uh, AP computer principles. Um, it's going to be the smallest AP course we have in the building, but it's important that.
Yeah.
It's been our goal to have the right staff members there to grow this program. And so we're going to run it. And we're, we're starting to build, what we want to have as a program is students who are the high school, they get into your science, and then from there they're going to be able to go into these kind of different, uh, specializations, whether it's the computer science course, the, uh, AP principles for Java or Apple or something else that we've got to figure out what that was. For a time, that's the only option was robotics, which is why our robotics program was great. That's where all the applications of coding came from.
Yeah.
Um, and that's where our coders went. Uh, and we have to rebuild that skill and figure that out. So we're hoping that our new staff with our, uh, with our work as a district with projects in the way and all that EMS and, and so what Sarah mentioned before and that some of those badge and stuff that she's working with, it's all just to funnel towards that entry experience with the high school and then just be able to specialize from there and then get in, into programs, uh, with, uh, organically build their pathway towards, um, their, around their interests. So, uh, getting some, getting some community support around what that next level flushes out to be is likely, but, uh, will be something that's done anyway, but she, when she developed with Mr. Fowles' robotics program for our, through, through, it's how, how do you do that?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a ton of parent involvement there. And I suspect that when we get our staff in place, we start to build it out over the ball.
That's great. That's, that's very encouraging. I'm satisfied. Any other questions on the school improvement? This is turning into like a springsteen concert. We're closing in on three hours.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, hey, I'm the one who wanted the extra meeting, but I don't want to keep it.
I didn't say no.
All right. So the question is, uh, to approve the DHS school improvement plan and handbook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Nil? Or nothing? Yatsi. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, Martha. Okay. Uh, can I please have a? Oh, was that a separate one? Okay. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the athletic handbook changes, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jim. Keep me on my table. Can I please have a motion to extend the athletic advisory committee into the 2022, 2023 school year?
So move.
All right. Um, so I think this is. All the? No, no, now we're in discussion. So.
And I'm going to talk about what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the Athletic Advisory Council, I'm doing this on behalf of Chris, who probably can't be here. So I am also a resident, a liaison for this group, but, um, she went the first meeting. So this was on her behalf. The Athletic Advisory Council was a pilot program for 2022, as we heard. This council's lab for collaboration of various stakeholders and demonstrated the need for the continuation of the council. Policy CEV will be updated at the first meeting of the council in September of 2023 and would be presented to this school committee for approval at that time.
So this is the athletic council that Jim's talking about?
Yes, it is.
And it was technically a pilot?
It was only set up for one year.
It was. Okay.
Following the meeting that they just had, obviously the request was that, to that discontinuing, uh, because it's been so great.
And so some of the work that's been done in that is, has effects, it has impact into the policy, into policy CEV, is what Kristen's, I think, saying. And then we're going to be updating then. So it sounds like the committee is going to be?
Applying the policy would sunset in the committee.
That's right.
The changes to the policy would.
Police.
Okay. So the change, so the policy would sunset. So we're going to change the policy to keep everything going.
Yes, it, the policy should be adjusted if we continue to.
Yeah. Which, which I have, you know.
Yes.
Yeah. I have no questions. Do you have any questions? This is going to be fast.
It's not. I just want to say, I was skeptical about this and I was the one who was like, I, I just think this is Michael Manchin and I don't need it. And I am happy to eat crow on this one.
Hey, growth mindset is the second thing. That's the second, growth mindset.
Yep.
Growth mindset.
I grilled how it turned out.
Yeah, me too.
Yep.
I think it's great. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. We have like solving a load of problems here. Okay, I'm going to move here because I'm going to do this one. So, uh, I moved the school committee pilot six-month virtual office hours program to begin in June 2022. Can I second?
Second.
Okay. So I think I called you Mrs. Linwood earlier. Did I call her Mrs. Linwood?
Which is a great place to hold up a Linwood.
So thank you for hanging out because this gets to what you said in the public time. So, all right. So the idea is that, um, I think the reality is, is that we do our best to communicate with the community, but that, that communication is typically one-way. We saw it this meeting today, five hours ago. One-way communication, you can't talk about.
I guess sometimes I do.
Sometimes you do. Well, you shouldn't, but, you know, we're going to talk about that now. One on one later. I'm just kidding. Uh, so what I would like to put together is a pilot where we can build in a mechanism for two-way communication, two-way dialogue. It can be done. So, uh, the, the mechanism would be a virtual office hours program. And it was important to me to, to build this into this last meeting and not wait until September. And I'll explain that in a minute. But essentially, the, the construct of the vir- virtual office hours program is really simple. Uh, once a month, we would have, we would, we would have a one-hour virtual office hour, a, a virtual office hour, one hour a month. And one or two of us could participate in any given hour. The hour would be broken into 15-minute conversations. So if Lynn wanted to participate in virtual office hours, which I'm sure she's going to, she would go in to sign up genius and she would see it posted and she would say, oh, cool, uh, office hours are seven to eight this month on Tuesday. I want, and the, the seven to seven fifteen slot is open, I want that. And she would, she would sign up for it. And then low and behold, at seven o'clock when you get in, you would be on a Zoom with one or two of us. And so on our side, we would, we would be signing up to host office hours with our own sign up genius. Pretty simple, right?
Very.
Okay. So, uh, why would I like to do it in the summer? Um, because this has some, some tissue, some connectivity into the budget. So we all have agreed that one of our goals is to, um, help support the district in putting together a thoughtful budget and helping PR, uh, and, 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 you know, advertising around the importance of that budget, particularly as it relates to specific things that we're working on, um, you know, with, with the employees, right? And ensure their funds into it. So I think the value in, in piloting this, starting in June, starting this month, enables us to do two things. One is that we kind of work the things out of the system because we're going to mess it up for the first time. Um, but we're also, hopefully, when we have our conversations, if they start even in the summer, there's nothing to say that we can't ask questions too, because it's a two-way dialogue. So Lynn's going to have an office hours to talk to us about, you know, what Lynn, right, George Soros. So we're going to have that conversation. And then sort of the end of that conversation, I, you know, if I'm, I could ask you a question too. I could say, hey, you know, what are your thoughts on this? That, the other things. It's two-way, right? Um, there have been some understandable, uh, you know, questions and concerns around open, uh, meeting law. So I mentioned in the last meeting that, um, Wellesley does an, an office hour program. So I talked to their chair, Catherine Merritt, and she was delightful and delighted to answer my questions. And so I, I also talked to Jim Hardy, who is our field director for MASC. And truthfully, they were both kind of confused. I said, so what about open meeting and concerns? And I had to sort of explain myself because they were like, there are no, there's only one or two of us. I said, oh, right, right, of course. There's no, but Catherine also did say, but, you know, these are like, you know, very sort of, you know, casual conversations. So typically, when an office hour starts, we'll make a quick statement. We'll say something like, look, I'm not speaking for school committee. I'm speaking for myself as a school committee member based on my own experience. So I would encourage us to just make sure that we're doing that to, you know, make, you know, to, to put a fine point on it. Um, so I think that's, that's it, right? So in sum, the idea is just to start building in some ways to do some two-way dialogue. I think it'll work well. If it does work well, uh, we could capitalize on it by either creating more of those office hours or coming up with other ways to do two-way dialogue. Um, that's it. Any, any questions on it? If I were you, I would ask the question. So how do we sort of get started on it? So I would say that, um, so I.
Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm sure it was on the typical.
You stand out of the mail, Sam, with the signup genius.
Yeah. Well, so no, I, so what I would suggest is, so I've already signed up in anticipation of, of you guys agreeing to it. I've already signed up two signup geniuses, one for the community and then one for us to host. So I will send that to you guys and ask for a volunteer, um, to do the first, to, to the one in June. It'll work awesome. Then we'll do one in July and then we'll go from there. What do you got?
You had one in the morning and one, did you have an hour in the morning, an hour at night?
Good question. So I, I, they're, they are sort of placeholders, but I think that we should mix it up. I think we should like, like June should be like on a Wednesday. I'm just making something up. Wednesday mornings, July like is on a Tuesday evening.
Okay.
Just to sort of like make it more. Yeah. Did you have a question?
So when you say like one person signs up, another people be on?
Other community members?
Yeah.
Uh, you could, you could bring in another community member if you wanted. And Wellesley, Wellesley does do that. And I probably wouldn't bring in a football team, but you know.
Not that anyone else, like I wouldn't bring people in, but put other people be on it just to watch or, yeah, just to, because I guess the whole idea is that, that an open conversation.
Well, it's a two-way conversation. It's a, it's a, it's a, I, I think the idea is for, for it to be a, a two-way conversation. I, I would recommend that we start by just sort of staying true to, to a conversation. If you want to bring somebody, like bring somebody, you know what I mean? Because like, you know, um, but I think that let's, let's get it right. And then as it starts to evolve, maybe we can come up with other ways of having two-way dialogue in a more open forum.
Yeah.
That was sort of what I was getting at because Wellesley also does, they have a really interesting idea. They just started it in September. They have like meet the principal. And, uh, what's it? So, so, and they just started it in December. So like one hour a month, they have a session. It's like a face-to-face session where you come in and you, Sarah's there, Danielle's there, and a school committee member or two are there. And she said, more often than not, like someone, like people will come in, it's, it's like a bunch of people, they, they want to come. And they have questions that are very, very targeted just to the principal. Like the other people don't even answer it because it's like so sort of principal. But she said there have been some instances where the question is so important that it's important for Danielle to hear, it's important for a couple of us to hear, and that can be brought back up at like a school committee meeting. Which reminds me of one other thing, because this was your concern. We have like these office hours, right? And it's just like a, a, a two-way meeting between two of us and like leading one person. Uh, I would suggest that that, you know, we, we summarize that conversation in the next school committee. You know what I mean? Like in, in, in opening comments or whatever. Wow, a great conversation with, uh, with Lynn. She brought this stuff up and, you know, it becomes repetitive because we're always hearing the same thing. We don't have to do that. But that's a way for us to be able to let everyone else know what we're hearing in an office hour. But ideally, you know, four months goes by, we're all doing an office hour. We'll all have a conversation. We'll all sort of summarize this conversation. I mean, are you, are you as excited as I am? Like I can tell by your face.
We are so excited. Well, the fact that I begged people to call me a few years, so they didn't, maybe they'll go on too and do an office hour.
It's a sad story, but it's going to have a happy ending. All right.
I'm also here.
So the question is, uh, that school committee pilot six-month virtual office hours program to begin in June 2022. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Four, nothing. No one opposed. Well, that's great. Thank you very much. Um, okay. Lastly, and we've been here for three hours, we've only got one more hour to go. May I have a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 superintendent evaluation, please?
So move it. Second.
All right. So, um, once again, I want to thank you guys for putting together your individual evaluations. Sorry, folks. And I went ahead and compiled that document. We got that by email today. Sorry that it was so late. I sent one to you too. Did you have a chance to look at it? Okay. Are there any questions that you had before I just sort of give the high altitude summary?
I do not have any.
No questions?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with at the end. And at the end, I made sure to put in green and highlight, I, I wrote, congratulations on a highly successful first-year Dr. Klingeman, exclamation point. We are grateful to have you, exclamation point. And I really do need that. I think that, uh, I, I personally, I couldn't be more pleased with, uh, having you as superintendent this, this first year, starting as interim and working your way into the, uh, into the permanent position. So I'll start with that. So, um, the, the super, the, the superintendent's, uh, goals are, they're sort of underpinned by a couple of things. They're underpinned by four standards and, um, and three, uh, three overall goals. The goals, the, the three overall goals being student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and a district improvement goal. But I'd like to start with the, um, with the four, um, with the four standards, if that's okay. So the four standards, the, the first standard is instructional, um, leadership. And so I'm just going to give a high altitude summary of what I wrote in the, um, in, in the compilation. Uh, so first, uh, Dr. Klingeman, in, in our view, continued the commitment to ensuring that the instructional staff is presented with a range of professional development opportunities and standards aligned, and standards-aligned training, and even coached, co-teaching a mandatory course for our second-year teacher. She took co-talk, a second, a course for the teachers, keeping her hand in, or keeping your hand in, uh, She took co-taught a sec, a course for teachers, keeping her hand in, or keeping your hand in, uh, instruction. And, you know, I think you've been really fortunate, uh, well, it's not fortunate, you recruited her, but, you know, you've got a, a, a assistant superintendent who I know is working shoulder to shoulder with you on that. I also wanted to comment that, um, you know, l- 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 last year was tumultuous, to, to say the least. And in the middle of that tumult, 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 um, you know, Dr. Klingman was able to approve our new DDI coordinator. Now, I call you a DDI coordinator. You call yourself a DDI director. I don't know what the hell the title actually is.
Caitlin.
Okay, so we're just calling Caitlin. But you were able to get, to get Caitlin in here while you were serving, uh, as interim, uh, interim superintendent, like I said, at a time of real tumult. But, um, I think what's really been impressive is that in your first year after having hired Caitlin, you were able to work very closely with Caitlin on some important initiatives, you know, putting that, uh, DDI committee together, you know, intentionally with people who have diverse points of view. I, it's my hope, it's my expectation, and I think that this is gonna happen, that, that good work continues and that, you know, Caitlin is, will become even more embedded sort of into the, to the tapestry of the school, you know? And so I think that that, I think that's excellent. I wanted to, to say a few words about, um, about some instructional strategies and approaches, like Orton Gilmehan, for example. This has been, it's, it's been a subject of a, of a little bit of controversy. Here's my feeling on it. Uh, after having read all the evaluation material and the evidence, the evidence is clear to me that, um, the systemic Orton Gilmehan training, i- i- it's clear, it's well justified, it's moving forward as it should, it's meeting sort of all of the benchmarks that it's posted. I just don't, I still think though there's confusion outside of the school. I think that there's confusion amongst the community members and other stakeholders outside of the, the, the walls. And so my, I, I will speak for the committee. The committee's hope is that you'll consider ways of, of centralizing that old G story and the story of other instructional strategies that we're using so that, um, you know, in your own best interest, you guys can stop playing so much defense and stop having to refer people to episodic Zoom recordings and episodic PowerPoint presentations. So I think the hope is that you can make some of these instructional strategies that to us is very, very clear and they're very well thought out just as clear to people outside of, of the school so that you're not having to spend a lot of time trying to explain it and re-explain it. Lastly, on instructional leadership, um, we think you deserve high praise for incorporating systems that are designed to track and measure the effectiveness of your instruction. And that includes things like the Massachusetts Teacher Evaluation Process, the introduction of LinkedIn standardized assessment, Dr. Klingman that you had mentioned earlier today. And as our teachers continue to use these and other resources to make data-driven instructional decisions, it opens up an opportunity for you and the team to consider more ways of giving parents and families sightlines into that assessment stuff. So I, I brought that up in the school improvement plans. I know that it's more for the element, for the elementary schools, but it's sort of like the, the, the same idea, right? There's some wonderful work going on within the district, within the walls of the school around, around how it is being. And, um, I think that we can, we can utilize an opportunity to help parents sort of get that same, that same sightline. Second standard is, is management and operations. I can't believe I wrote it this way because I usually don't write this way. But I said, Dr. Klingman is to be commended for establishing and managing well-organized protocols this year, particularly in areas related to COVID, right? So I'll just say things like the infection number updates, the test and stay program, the self-test kit initiatives, right? All of those things are so important, so valuable, and they have been so consistent. And that's been really remarkable because COVID is unpredictable and restrictions have been unpredictable. So congratulations on keeping the community really well-informed around those COVID numbers. It's, it's very, very appreciated. There's been unexpected turnover this year. I don't think that that's that much of a surprise. But we've had turnover in the, um, business and finance department. We've had turnover in facilities leadership. All of that happened mid-year. I don't care who you are, that's gonna be challenging when you have turnover mid-year. But, you know, you've been able to recruit great talent and get great talent into the district mid-year, and that really, I think, deserves some, some, some recognition. It's also very encouraging to know, and you've said this a few times, Dr. Klingman, that you are laser-focused on ensuring that Jim's replacement is, um, you know, the right person at the, at the, at the right time to be able to, you know, continue great leadership and great culture at the, at the high school. I think our only ask would be, uh, if, if, if you see opportunities for, you know, further improvement in, in those sorts of areas, figure out ways to let us know. You don't have to sort of betray confidentiality to let us know that there are opportunities for, you know, you know, great, great talent in certain areas because we can help. If you can't help, we should know because, um, then we will know where, where and when to support it. So this one I've said to you privately, it's come up in one of the individual, uh, in, in, in the individual, uh, evaluations. I don't know how else to put it, but I have really admiration for the work that you do. And you put in a ton of work. You put in a ton of hours. There's just no other way to put it. You work too hard. And I think, I, I think it's great that you put in so many hours. I just don't want you to get burnt out. And so like as you continue to develop your leadership team, um, my recommendation, our recommendation would be to not be afraid to delegate. Don't be afraid to share some of the work that I know you're already doing.
They're probably scared because.
Yeah, but that's okay.
They are making so much.
But that's okay because in my experience, uh, people rise to the occasion. And I told you a story before back when, you know, before I had my own business and I managed a lot of people. I had a great manager, I'm going to tell him, he's like, you know, Matt, you know, give them some work, they'll appreciate it. And I told you, I went to the guy and I said, I got a big one for you. This is gonna be hard, but you're the guy to do it. And I was afraid to give him the work, but he, he emailed me a half hour later. He goes, I've never been so excited to work here. Because he wanted to do that work, you know, he, he wanted to crow himself. He wanted to, see, I'm all getting misty about it. He wanted his grip. So, you know, you know, I think that your, your people, even Tony, look at Tony. Tony's like full of beans. So, uh, you know, I think that they will, I think that they will rise to the challenge. And quite frankly, I, we need it. So I, I just don't want you to burn, I don't want you to burn yourself up. Okay, so the budget. And by the budget, I mean the, the, the budget presentation, you have pictures to go. The, you know, the, the, the budget, the, the supporting artifacts, they are the gold standard. You know, I've looked at budgets in other districts and I've looked at budget artifacts before, you know, before we joined or before we started, joined school committee. And there's really, there's really no comparison. Like, if even for someone like me, as an English teacher, I don't know numbers. But I can look at the budget and I can get a sense of where the money is being spent and where it's allocated, and it's, it's, it's chef's kiss. It's wonderful. So, you know, if I can get sightlines into it, then anybody can get sightlines into it. And there's evidence. You know, the evidence of the great work that's been done around the budget is that for the first time in like a decade, we were able to realize more than a level services budget this year. And that is on you. That's wonderful. So congrats, you know, congra, congratulations on that. And I think we, we still have opportunity, um, to, I think, even work more closely as a committee to help inform the budget. And that's one of the reasons why we have that as, as one of our, as one of our three goals. So my only ask would be, um, you know, if I or anyone else has a recommendation, as the budget is being developed, just give, give us an evidence that you're looking at it. Just give us an evidence that you're looking at. You don't have to do it, it's your decision. But, um, it would help us to know that, you know, because we come from different walks of life, not necessarily in education, but some of us have real experience doing budgets. And so, um, just, just let us know you're considering the work, you're considering that, that will go, that will go a long way. Uh, standard three is family and community engagement. And so again, I don't know how I will just say that. Communication is a particular area of strength for Dr. Klingman. And it is, uh, you have demonstrated a willingness to listen. You have demonstrated a willingness to accept feedback from everybody, from community members, internal staff, other departments in town, us. And you do it with, like, I call you at home when you're not with me. I call you the unflappable Dr. Klingman. You are unflappable because you're calm and you're poised and you don't get overly emotional and you're authentic. And that is needed and it is, it's really needed after the really highly-charged atmosphere that, that we worked in, um, certainly last year and even before that. So we appreciate it. You, you have, uh, demonstrated that you're persistent and that you're repeatable. I've talked about the COVID numbers, uh, already. That was really valuable. But your regular Friday updates to the community, like my, my disease isn't happy. Look at that, she's nodding, right? So the, uh, you know, the, the Friday updates to the community, that just shows us that you, you're committed to transparency and that you are accessible. What I specifically appreciate, this came out in my evaluation specifically, is that you're also not too sort of above it to pivot. So if you have a plan of how you're gonna communicate, let's say it's sort of like with MailChimp or something like that, and it isn't working for people, you're not afraid to sort of change it and, and, and make it better. And that's, that's a really admirable quality. I love it. Uh, and then thi- thi- this is sort of like our greatest strength is also our greatest weakness. So I talked about like the work that you do and the hours that you put in. You're present, man. Like you're around. You're at the games, you're at the concerts, you're at the recitals. And, uh, that, I think, I would hope demonstrates to the community that you are interested and you're interested in being part of, of this district at a real human level. And, you know, that really, that, that can't be, that can't be overstated. I would like to see, I think all of us would like, I know all of us would like to see, that talent that you have on capitalizing on your commitment to transparency by helping the district and helping the district leaders figure out how to take that, um, that learning, sort of that learning communication, that learning data that I keep harping on and helping the parents and, and families sort of understand more about how that's working. Because in, in my view anyway, parents and families have their own obligation, they have their own, there's an expectation for them to support it. If they're not supporting their kids, then we're missing a leg of the school. So, um, you're, you're a great communicator. And so I, I think there's, you, 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 you're really hitting the ground running. Standard four is, uh, professional culture. That's all around setting high standards for yourself, your team. You have done that. Here's, here's our do-wanna, okay? You know this district because you've been assistant superintendent for a number of years and you've been interim superintendent for a, a year after that. You were obligated to do a superintendent entry point. You have to do that. But what struck us about the way that you did that is you did it as if you hadn't worked here before. That's really interesting. You know what I mean? Like you didn't sort of come in and say, well, I know how to do this. It's just sort of like a checkbox that you really went through an exhausted sort of battery of, 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 of activity to ensure that you were sort of relearning this district now that you had to through a different lens. And God bless you, Jim, don't do it again. That is awesome. You've also, you know, you, 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 you also invited your, um, you know, second-in-command, your assistant superintendent, I think, join you in, in that process. And has that been helpful for you?
Oh, absolutely.
That's great. All right. So, um, you know, you know, nope. You're, you're not a bug. And I think that that's great. So the, the district strategic plan, vital. I was, you know, I was skeptical. We had that meeting in the, um, at the senior center. I was, I was skeptical, but, you know, just like how I was, I'll eat some crow. I mean, you, you chose a wonderful facilitator who also happens to be your coach. I'm convinced that the, you know, the organization that she works within, is it Desi? That she was a part of Desi?
Um, she does the planning for success through Desi.
It's terrific. Yeah, I know, but, but it's a Desi, it's a Desi-sponsored program, it's planning success is what I'm getting at. So, um, you know, between, between her as facilitator and the program itself, I'm convinced that we're, we're moving in the, in the right direction. Um, I'm particularly pleased that, from my view anyway, we have a wide range of voices in that planning process. I'm part of that, that planning committee and I see a lot, Laurel's in it as well. I see a lot of different points of view. And it's a subtle point, but it's an important point, that you actually changed the path of characters based on feedback, like right after you started. And again, that's just sort of, that, that shows me that you're willing to really listen and really consider things. At the end of the day, it's your call. But, um, you know, I, I just appreciate the fact that you're not, that you're willing to be flexible. This has been a challenging year of negotiations. Would you say, would you agree that this has been a challenging negotiation year with the ETA? Okay, so it's been challenging. And, uh, that requires to, that, that requires the superintendent to strike a balance. Here's the balance. You have to show appreciation for our educators for being great, because they are great, but you also gotta negotiate with them on their, on their, that's a fine line to walk. Uh, and it's based on fiscal reality and fiduciary responsibility. I, I couldn't do it. I, I just, I, I couldn't do it. But I've been able, because I've been in these negotiations, I've been able to observe Dr. Klingman's manner in how she does it. And so sort of, you know, long story short, she's able to, you know, be very authentic and convincing around how she appreciates the staff. But she's also very direct in sort of helping to convey the realities of the budget that we're working in. And that's a hard, that's, that's a hard thing to do, you know?
And do it in such a pleasant demeanor.
Yeah, it's like just factual and, yeah. Unflap, the unflappable Dr. K. We're gonna change your name later. And then lastly, uh, along this, uh, pillar is, um, your own professional work. And I want to celebrate that because I, I don't know how you've had time to do it, but you're still teaching. So you were, you were involved in the credit for a lot of sessions, which I'm still pissed that I missed. And you were chosen by Masque to lead a seminar, I think, coming this fall around, is it this fall or was it last fall?
Oh, that's, uh, some of us in the district are presenting together on the, um, implementation of the analytic view program. So I was the last, we're all doing that.
You're all doing it together?
Yeah.
Okay. Still awesome. And so that's it. I mean, does anyone have anything? Did I miss anything? I talked for a long time, but I, I hope that I captured it. Does anyone have anything we'd like to add?
I think, you know, you did a good job of taking all of our evaluations and some of them off of your words.
And then, Jake?
Okay. I would say, sorry, that I don't think people outside this process can appreciate like how much you do. I, if you did like a, an analysis of hours work based on your salary, you'd look like thirteen times an hour, I think. And I talked to Fluffy or whatnot, I just, I do think that it's, it's such an insightful process to go through. And I mean, everybody has real personal movement, and I'm sure you'd say that yourself. So, um, I just, like, like, I think being part of this process was insightful and, um, just a factor, so.
For sure. I, I do have one thing to add. Just from, again, I always say from the student's perspective, I don't think like a student could thank Dr. Klingman enough because like for someone in that position who's so busy all the time to be willing to sit in a group of super hyperactive middle schoolers last block on a Friday and listen to their concerns about things going on at the middle school and meeting with, you know, kids from the high school regularly and being able to, you know, meet with these kids and listen to their opinions, even if it's not something that people might want to hear and, you know, ways that we can like change the school for the better. And just hearing what all of those students have said, it's always positive and always saying how much they appreciate Dr. Klingman, all the things that she's done and the willingness to actually listen to students, which is, you know, change a thing that we've seen recently. And I, I know, just, I said, thank you from all of us students. It's very much appreciated, so.
I wish I could hang out with you all day every day.
And that's the truth, all right. Any, any thoughts from this side of the table?
I will speak, uh, a long time. I've probably educational with twenty-five years. I'll say that to play you and probably as well as best with that. I feel lucky to be here.
Well, that's great. Awesome. Excellent. All right. So, uh, any final words from you, Dr. Klingman?
No. I'll just say, I do have to say, I love working in Duckberry. I love coming to work every day. It's crazy because I have a long ride here, but I look forward to it. Uh, I have the best team that I work with and I couldn't do anything that you just talked about without the central office team, the principals, the administrators and the staff, the teaching staff here and even the central office staff. I just love this community. I love working here and I appreciate the positive feedback. And it's torture for me to have to sit here and. You're on each of this one, so you can wrap it up.
All right, so we'll wrap it up. If anyone has anything else. So the question is to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two superintendent evaluation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No? All right, motion passes. It's not over like the powderpoint bridge in the Fourth of July. It's not over like the powderpoint bridge of the Fourth of July parade. It's a Duxbury staple. It's time for second public comment. Who would like to start? You could thank Martha Duss at second public comment? All right, okay, so we're all in favor. Uh, can I have a motion to return?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.